Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt. Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Klein. Vice Mayor Niss. Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Mayor Shepard.
Here.
So we have eight present. Council will be going into a closed session on labor negotiators with the, regarding the International Association of Firefighters and the Palo Alto Police Officers Association, and council will be bringing forward the closed session on the conference with city attorney existing litigation that is currently number 12 on the agenda.
startling statistics, tips for reducing your food waste, and a step-by-step recipe for making new cultural norms. We'll also take you along on a field trip to a large-scale composting facility and hear the stories of waste warriors who see a lot of opportunity in all the food we discard.
I'm Mallory Smith.
And I'm Diane Wu.
Here's our first statistic for you. 100% of food waste experts we spoke to used this pun.
Such low-hanging fruit!
Yeah! No pun intended. And so we'll be calling this week's episode "The Lowest-Hanging Fruit Is The One In The Landfill." Let's get started.
Part one, the numbers.
Waste in general was my first huge passion. I grew up on Kauai, which is a small island in Hawaii, with my mother's side of the family, which is pure Japanese, fairly traditional Japanese. It was always stressed to us, I guess, that it was important to really value everything you had, it was really important to make sure that you didn't waste anything because you never knew when you would need that when someone else would need it. I'm Nicole Gaitens. I'm a co-term student in the Earth Systems Program here, and my concentration is in food and waste systems.
Nicole is a warrior against waste. We had the chance to talk with her about food waste specifically.
The number that gets thrown out a lot is that 40% of food in the US gets wasted.
Forty percent. This means that almost half of the food that our farms and factories grow and produce, and they spend a lot of energy and effort doing so, half of this food is made just to be thrown away. The losses are highest for fruits and vegetables, where more than half of the vegetables produced are not consumed.
Waste researcher Jonathan Bloom has estimated that the food wasted in one day in America is enough to fill the entire Rose Bowl football stadium, the whole stadium all the way to the top. That's how much food we're throwing in the garbage every single day.
I guess there are different reasons for different types of food waste, and it kind of, I think, an interesting thing about, I think, the average consumer when we think about food waste, we think about the food that maybe spoils in our refrigerator or the food that's left over from when we're eating at a restaurant or something. But systemically, I mean, there's food that's not eaten that starts from the farm. For example, on a, the way that profits are made on farms in terms of the cost of picking a fruit versus the selling price of it at the time, there are times when it doesn't make economic sense for farmers to harvest. And in that case, you have a bunch of produce rotting in the field. So that's a huge portion of food waste right there.
Another loss in food harvesting is the culling of less desirable vegetables and fruits. Cucumbers that aren't perfectly straight, or iceberg lettuces with a soft spot on them that could bloom into full rot by the time they reach the supermarket. The producers can't risk having a whole pallet of vegetables turned away by one bad head of lettuce, so it just gets left in the field to rot.
Have you ever noticed how all the apples at the grocery store these days are the same exact size, and they're all huge? They don't just all come off the tree like that. Our high aesthetic standards as consumers require that many smaller, less symmetric fruits and vegetables get left behind and thrown away.
20% of fruits and vegetables get discarded in the production step. So if we start out with 100 perfectly edible peaches on a tree, on average, only 80 will make it off of the farm. Of the food that gets distributed to a supermarket or restaurant, much will never reach your stomach. Nicole saw this firsthand when she was doing waste audits of restaurants and bakeries in the Bay Area.
And it was literally a dumpster full of bread, like, the whole dumpster. It was crazy, all kinds of bread. It looked, I couldn't even tell that it was a day-old. And just the sheer volume was so depressing to me, especially, you know, having done food donations in the past or serving at food pantries, and people kind of scrounging around to find this food to serve to people. And this one dumpster had more bread than we had found for this food pantry over the course of a week was just really, really depressing to me.
Going back to our peaches, 12% of them will get discarded in distribution and retail. For example, they won't get sold at the grocery store, or they'll be in a pallet of peaches that gets rejected for blemishes once it arrives at the store. This leaves us about 70 peaches of the original 100. We've lost 30.
Finally, we buy the peaches, and one-third of these becomes that cobbler that we can't quite finish, or age into mushy old peaches that we decide to throw out. Ultimately, only 48 of the original 100 peaches that were grown on the farm get eaten by anyone. The rest are lost along the way.
Putting all of this food in the trash is costly in many ways. One of the most obvious things we're losing by throwing away so much food is money. It's estimated that an average family of four in America throws away around $2,000 of food each year. If we add up all of the losses from field to fork, this amounts to $165 billion of food waste annually in America.
The resources to produce food are also at stake. 25% of our country's fresh water is used to produce food waste. Food waste accounts for an estimated 4% of our nation's total energy use, 4% that doesn't have to happen.
I'm gonna say now, especially in the Bay Area, roughly, I think 30% of our, quote, "waste" is food, or organics, as they call it in the street. In terms of proportion of things going to the landfill, food is a major contributor. It's popular now to think about environmental impact in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, of which food is a huge issue with methane, which is 21 to 22 times more potent than CO2.
Food waste contributes 25% of total methane emissions in America.
There are huge consequences for natural resources in clearing space for landfills, in the transportation of our waste in general, which again is largely food to landfills. A garbage truck, this is a fun one for me, I think the average garbage truck's miles per gallon is eight.
Really?
Yes. Which is why garbage companies are really expensive kind of undertaking because of that, that's a huge gasoline cost. And then we have places, you know, particularly for island nations, or islands like Hawaii that are part of the United States. Most of our trash gets shipped to, or Oregon, actually, which I think is interesting. Yeah, why Oregon? It depends on who accepts landfills. Long story, I could talk about landfill policies for days. But just thinking about the shipping costs of shipping all this food that could have been eaten from Hawaii to Oregon, and then finding this piece of land that you're gonna bulldoze over and then put a landfill in, it's just, the natural resource restraint is really startling.
When we choose to save food instead of throwing it away, we're also choosing to save water, gas, space, money, and time. Food waste is a big problem, but starting to solve it is as easy as putting the rest of your dinner in the fridge for later instead of throwing it in the trash. Stay tuned to hear how to make better use of the food that's getting thrown away. You're listening to Green Grid Radio. Today, we're covering food waste. We've reached part two of our show, Steak, Shame, and Solutions.
Back in Nicole's hometown of Kauai...
We don't have a homeless shelter on Kauai, mainly because people are fine living on the beach. And there are pavilions, and people can just give their leftovers to those people. You don't find any of it in the trash, which is an interesting contrast, actually, to the large tourist population, and you can, you notice that in that case, they will throw away the food.
The tourists throw away the food?
Yeah, and my mom would always complain about that. She once, like, went up to the tourist family and asked them why they were throwing away their food, and whether or not she could have it to give to someone else. I was really embarrassed at the time. But I've come to realize that, I think, in large part, my mom's willingness to not stick to cultural norms and be pretty vocal about it was something that I learned from and became more willing to do because I saw her doing that, and that it actually, to me, did make a difference in how people behaved. And it made people stop to think who would never otherwise, I think, think about it because no one would have ever confronted them about that sort of behavior.
So Mallory, when was the last time you saw food being wasted?
I actually feel like I see food being wasted all the time. Like, there's small-scale food waste that I see every day, like, you know, somebody eating half of their sandwich and then throwing the other half away, or, you know, somebody going into their fridge and realizing that their yogurt is expired and throwing that away. But I've seen it actually on a larger scale, in, like, dining halls and hospitals, and one of the weird things about what I see in hospitals is that they'll just send food to people's rooms, like, even if they don't want it. So I find this weird, because I do see trays of food just being thrown out all the time. What about you?
The time that comes to mind the most is when, recently, I went to dinner with a visiting professor, and it was paid for by the chem department, so we got to go to a fancy steakhouse, and everyone ordered a steak, and the steaks came out and they were enormous. They were like the size of a baseball glove, like, of meat. And the grad students were all very excited and hungry and ate their steaks, but the professor ate, like, maybe a quarter of it, and then when it was time to clear the table, the waitress was like, "Oh, would you like me to pack this up for you?" But he was flying out the next day, and he was like, "No, don't worry about it." And like, there was this moment where he's like, "I'll take it!" Like, I almost said it, because it was such a shame that, like...
It was just gonna sit in the trash.
Yeah, and this huge piece of meat that was, like, both expensive, and there's so much embedded energy.
It was prepared.
Yeah.
But you didn't say it?
Yeah, I was like, "Ah, I really wanted to," but it was, it would have been too embarrassing to be like, "I want to eat your old food, or laptop hurts."
I mean, there's kind of a weird, like, shame and pride in being the vacuum cleaner. We always call my brother the vacuum cleaner, because like, if anybody's plate isn't finished, he'll finish it. But like, yeah, it's kind of like a shame, like, it's a weird shame thing when you're in a nice restaurant.
Yeah, exactly.
When it should be like a pride thing, like, "Oh yeah, I'm gonna, like, not let that go to waste, I'll totally eat it."
Mm-hmm, yeah, definitely. I asked Nicole if she had any practical advice in challenging social norms to make reducing food waste a pride thing instead of a shame thing. What do you think are good ways of changing the culture or trying to?
I think a lot of people who want to do these things, if they are introduced to simple ideas about how to promote it, and who are willing to visibly do those sorts of things, it can really kind of snowball. I think a great example right now is this huge movement towards vegetarianism and veganism that we're seeing. I remember in high school, it being, I mean, it's still true in a lot of places, but not eating meat was culturally not an easy thing to do, and it was something that people weren't always comfortable admitting, they weren't always proud of, you know? And if things like taking your leftovers home, or sharing your, making an effort to donate food that you see leftover in an event, and kind of just being vocal about that, I think that there's the same potential there to make that something that people are proud of.
So sort of getting a critical mass of people who are proud and visibly doing these things that might otherwise have been considered taboo?
Yes, exactly.
But how do you get brave enough to visibly do things that are embarrassing? Like, brave enough to ask for a professor's leftover steak at a fancy restaurant?
The most important thing to changing culture is to just stomach the stereotype and just go with it, because I think, again, easier said than done, but I think that, in general, our perception of how much other people are judging us for these things is not actually reflective of it at all. And it took me a while to be willing to learn that. I think it's nice to practice with people that you already know are not very judgmental in general, or who you're closer to, to kind of get more used to doing it yourself, because it's a new habit for you. I guess a weird example, when I was in Australia studying abroad, we were at this chocolate bar, and there was this giant chocolate fondue that these two women ordered with all of these different, like, types of breads and bananas and whatever, and strawberries to dip in it. And they sat there, they ate one each, and then they walked, and it was like a $40 fondue set, and drove me crazy. And I was with a bunch of Stanford kids who I think knew me fairly well and were fairly accepting, and I just grabbed the fondue from the other table and put it on our table, and I started eating it. And I was like, "This fondue is awesome," and they started eating it too. You know, I was really afraid they were gonna, they were gonna forget. And I definitely got some weird looks from some other people in the restaurant. But I guess the point more there is that, once you get over that first initial step of really worrying about how other people feel about it, you can get other people to be willing to do it too. I easy other people eating my fondue.
Nicole had a simple method to normalize uncommon behavior. You just have to try it out. Try not to worry about how others will judge you. They might even be on your side, eating your new fondue with you. But in case they are judgmental, it helps if you can say you're doing this weird thing in the name of the environment.
And I think the second point there is, in other situations, I think, as long as you vocalize, either before or after, kind of, your reasons for doing something and where you're coming from, people can respect that more. I think a lot of the kind of thrifty and environmental things, when people say they're doing it for, you know, environmental reasons or social reasons, as opposed to them, quote, "needing it," people, it's more easy to think of it as a source of pride than a source of what people otherwise associate as social economic status. As long as people, when they do something, can say that they're doing it for this other higher cause, it changes from an idea of... What I often do things, it's like, "I don't want to buy this because I don't have a lot of money." I mean, that's true too, but to be able to give another reason helps people, I think, be willing to take that sort of cultural behavior on.
So reducing food waste doesn't require getting out of your comfort zone, though, everyone. It can be as simple as understanding when your food is good and when you should throw it out. So Mallory, how do you tell if food in your fridge is still good?
I actually think I'm not very good at knowing when things are good to eat or not, and I tend to err on the safe side. So for example, if I have a bunch of yogurts in my fridge, which I often do, and one of them is one day past the expiration date, I'll, like, open it and smell it, and I think it might be just sort of like my brain making up that it smells rotten. But if it's past the expiration date, I just automatically am like, "Ugh, I gotta throw it away." And so I usually do that because, you know, I don't want to risk getting, like, food poisoning from my rotten dairy. But in general, like, if I have leftovers in a Tupperware, like, I have no idea how many days it's good to keep that, and my parents are kind of germaphobes, so they're like, "Two days and you throw it away." So yeah, I'm bad at it.
Well, I have a little secret for at least the yogurt situation, maybe not your leftovers. I found out that the sell-buy dates and the best-buy dates that you see on your yogurt containers, or your milk, and your juice, and whatever, those aren't really regulated in any way. They're voluntary dates that the manufacturer puts on, and best-buy just means that this is the date that the manufacturer thinks, whatever the food is, the yogurt, will be, its peak freshness will end. So the key here is that sell-buy, best-buy, and used-buy dates are not an indicator or guarantee of food safety at all. Most food, except for infant formula and baby food, doesn't have a regulated expiration date. So if you look in your fridge, many of the dates you'll see stamped on your food don't say expires on or used by, but are instead just these best-buy dates.
Oh, that's weird. I like, I mean, I think there's sort of this culture that if you eat food past the expiration date, like, it's, or past the date that's stamped on, whether it's, you know, expired by or best-buy or whatever, that it's, like, dangerous. And so I never, I kind of always thought that there was some scientific way of knowing that it's actually gonna be rotten on that day.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And then I found out that, if you're not sure, there's this nice website, it's called stilltasty.com, and it's basically a database with all different kinds of food. It tells you how to best store them, which is pretty cool, and how long they typically keep past the best-buy date. So for example, I checked on your yogurt. That's good, typically good for seven to 10 days after the best-buy date stamped on by the manufacturer.
Oh, wow.
If you keep it refrigerated. So check it out next time you have some food that you're not sure about.
Yeah, that's really cool.
Stilltasty.com. But yeah, in general, I think it's really important to recognize that these aren't, like, very serious scientific dates, and they're more of a guideline for how good the food tastes, and also just to become more familiar with your food and trust your instinct on whether or not something is good to eat or not.
Yeah, your taste buds are pretty good at telling you if something is not gonna be good for you.
Yeah, just take a little nibble, and if it doesn't seem like something you should be eating...
Then you toss it.
Yeah. Otherwise, you can enjoy it.
Or feed it to the dog.
I guess going back to your fridge with the yogurt that has, that may or may not have gone bad in it, Dana Gunders, who we'll hear from a bit later in our show, and we already heard about with the squash, she had this awesome challenge to our listeners.
Actually, where I think some really cool innovation could happen, and I think probably it's a bunch of Stanford students who are gonna invent this because it's not, hasn't been done well yet, is in food storage, and what I call the refrigerator of the future. I think refrigerators really haven't changed that much in their design since they were made. I mean, they've always been this box with two sections, and you open it, and there's only two temperatures, and they don't really have a great user interface, things get lost in the back, et cetera. And I think there's huge opportunity to, like, revolutionize the refrigerator and completely rethink it. So that's my challenge to the Stanford community.
This is Green Grid Radio. We now bring you part three of our show on food waste, sharing is caring.
Now we're gonna talk about how we can reuse food waste that we can't reduce. And we found out about a really cool solution to repurpose food waste right here at Stanford, which is called Spoon, the Stanford Project on Hunger. One of our producers, Eric Olson, brings you the story of Spoon.
A couple of days ago, I went to the Hall Center for public service to visit Elena and Mate from Spoon.
It's the Stanford Project on Hunger, and I'm Elena Smoticus.
And I'm Martha Boplis-Sager.
And what is it that we're gonna do today?
So today, our job is to pick up food that has been left over from the Faculty Club and bring it back to the Hall Center so that it can be stored and frozen until it goes to the Ecumenical Hunger Program in East Palo Alto. There are about 10 volunteers, three coordinators, I believe, possibly four, who run this in order to be able to collect the food from the ground campus, Faculty Club for now, and make use of it.
So what kind of food is it that we pick up?
It ranges based on what's left over to the Faculty Club, but there's a definite recurrence of potatoes.
Potatoes are a staple.
Potatoes are a staple, fish, chicken.
Fish, beef.
Beef, protein, sometimes pizza.
Elena and Mate told me that this food is food that was prepared but not served.
Yes, it was leftover food, I believe, that wasn't served. So they had, it's not like it was food that people had and it was untouched, it was food that they had made but wasn't necessary. And it's difficult to be able to gauge how much food is needed per day, and so they usually overestimate, so they don't run out of food, and that's where we come in.
Food volunteers go once a day to the Stanford Faculty Club to pick up food.
I would say arguably the hardest part is bringing the food back without it falling off the cart.
We really need to give them the shopping cart idea. I think a shopping cart would be better than this. It's gonna won't slide off or anything.
So Martha and I meet up at the Hall Center, and we have to get the cart, get the trays and lids for the food. We grab some heat-proof gloves, because the trays the food is in at the Faculty Club can be pretty hot. We walk over there, and they normally have some leftovers set aside for us. And again, these aren't leftovers that were on anyone's plate, these are just leftovers from the prepared food. Sometimes they'll bring us more as we're, you know, doing our thing.
They're very helpful, they're very kind, they're very respectful of us. Whereas we're definitely in their way at times, we feel bad, because we have a big cart in the back of their kitchen, but they bring the food over there, so they know that it's going to good times as well.
So I mean, this is, how many boxes? Five, six?
Some days we get only three trays of food, some days I've come back with 10. It really varies.
Yeah, but for you, it must feel like it's a success that, when it's not a lot food, right?
Yes.
There's not necessarily more food waste, but...
Say that again?
It means that we have more food waste, but we see it as a success because we get to donate more food to the Opportunity Center, the Ecumenical Food Program.
All right.
It sort of goes both ways. It's a success to have less food waste, but it also feels good to be able to donate as much as possible.
So we transfer the food from the hot trays into our aluminum foil trays, and label them with what the food is, what the date was that the food was collected, so that we know exactly when we had it, it's not gonna go bad, and we bring it all the way back to the Hall Center.
Where we will weigh it on a little scale we have, and record what type of food it was and how much it weighed, so we can keep track of the food waste we prevent, and then we store it in a freezer behind the Hall Center.
All right, and then what's next?
It gets picked up on Tuesdays by people who work with the Ecumenical Hunger Program, and we repeat.
Daily.
Spoon doesn't distribute the food themselves. Instead, they partner with an organization within the community, and currently, they work with the Ecumenical Hunger Program in East Palo Alto, which provides emergency food and housing to people in the Bay Area. Have you yourself met or been a part of the distribution, or are you just collecting food?
We just collect the food. They come and pick up the donations and bring them, you know, where they're needed, so we're not involved in the distribution process.
But we would definitely be interested, I think, both Elena and I, of being involved at least a few times to see, like, who are the people who are getting food and seeing the positive effects of our donations.
Towards the end of my visit, Elena, Mate, and I sat down for a little bit to talk about the bigger picture. Picking up leftover food is, you know, is a great solution, because as you said, you avoid waste and you provide... you both avoid waste and you provide food for someone who's hungry. But wouldn't it be better if there was no waste and the people who are hungry could provide for themselves or like without this charity?
In a perfect society, most definitely. And that's definitely what we're trying to strive for. But given that we have a very imperfect society right now, we see that this is the next best option.
This is definitely sort of a bandage, not an actual solution to poverty or to food waste, but it's sort of a way to take two problems in society and put them together in a way that benefits a lot of people.
Do you have any thoughts on how you could address the root causes to these problems?
That's not my field, that's your field, Elena.
Well, food waste is definitely something that we can cut down on campus. And like we said, the Faculty Club sort of overprepares because they don't know who's coming in, and the dining halls sort of do the same thing. And it's difficult because they don't want to, you know, run out of food for anyone. But I think that there are definitely ways to be more efficient. It's definitely a privilege to have food waste.
What do you think, could that be leveraged somehow to minimize it?
Sometimes when I think of, I guess when we were asking you about the Faculty Club and why they have food waste, you said because we can afford it. You know, what would be the problem if we did run out of fish one day and the only option was chicken? I guess some would see that as a problem if they're vegetarian, but I guess we're very privileged in that sense, because if we have an option, we want to be able to have all the options. And that, we're not as willing to make sacrifices in order to prevent food waste.
For restaurants and other organizations who are interested in food donation but worried about getting involved because of liability issues, we want to highlight the Good Samaritan Law.
So in 1997, I believe it was, the Good Samaritan Law passed, which kept anyone from liability for food poisoning or anything like that when they were donating the food to, you know, a nonprofit cause. A lot of places are afraid of donating food because of a liability issue when in fact they do not have one.
More recently, California initiated a 10% tax credit for farmers who donate fresh fruits and vegetables to food banks.
Back on campus, Nicole Gaitens, who volunteers with Spoon to help them redistribute 13,000 pounds of food waste each year, has these thoughts on the future of the program.
I feel like this should be just part of the Stanford system, that they shouldn't need student volunteers for this. This should be a program that Stanford has and prioritizes. And similarly, it was funny, I was talking to a Stanford alumni who, and back in the 90s, the recycling program was totally student-run. These kids at Synergy had these giant flatbeds and would pick up the recycling from different places on campus. And it's just this tremendous undertaking for students to take, and obviously they could, similar to what Spoon's like now, they could not do all of it. And you know, finally Stanford did get a recycling center to handle that sort of thing. And I hope that the priority gets to a point where food waste is treated the same way. Like this is an infrastructural priority for Stanford that we're going to make sure gets taken care of, as opposed to a, oh, this is great that these students are volunteering to do this, and you know, whatever they can do, that's satisfactory.
Part four, boxers in your compost. Let's go to compost. So what do you think is the most exciting about organic waste these days?
Oh, it is exciting. It's very, very exciting.
This is Julie Muir.
My name is Julie Muir. I work for Peninsula Sanitary Service and the Stanford Recycling Center.
Julie gave us the lowdown on the organic waste industry.
I think one of the cool things about the industry is that there's always a new material type to go after. So in the 80s, you went after bottles and cans and paper. The late 90s, we started focusing on construction and demolition material. So that was a big program in the late 1990s. Then in the early 2000s, we started focusing on food waste. And then since then, we've just grown the program to all the dining halls, half the cafes on campus. We're doing some pilots and office composting, finding ways that we can, and special event composting, bringing all this organic material back to us. We send it off-campus to be composted, and we bring back finished compost for the grounds department and other projects on campus to use. So it's kind of a full, kind of closed-loop system, which is kind of fun. But right now, food waste has been identified as the number one thing to get out of the landfill. Because on a climate change issue, when you put food waste in a landfill, it creates methane. So the state put out its strategic goals, it said that we need to get land, we need to get organics out of the landfill, and so we've been creating composting programs ever since. And in fact, recently, the cap and trade money that the state has earned, we are lobbying to use some of that money for organic diversion development. So developing more anaerobic digesters is a new way of digesting the food waste so that you create the methane in a closed environment and capture the methane. And then when you're done doing that, you, the digestive that comes out the end can be composted and put back on the soil. And so this is kind of an exciting development, that we need more of these facilities so that we can handle all of the organic waste. Very exciting time, everyone's trying to figure out a different way of doing it, and it's very, very exciting, very exciting to work on.
Just to recap, anaerobic digesters are a compost setup that can basically funnel off the methane generated in decomposition and use it as natural gas to fuel power plants or buses. Traditional composting, what you might have in your backyard, for example, is aerobic and does not create methane. Instead, bacteria that are exposed to oxygen will generate carbon dioxide. Next, I asked Julie what it is like inside of a landfill. Can you describe what a landfill is like?
A landfill is a, in the US, is a dry tomb. The whole objective of landfilling is to remove sunlight, remove water, and remove air so that things don't biodegrade very fast. That's why, you know, the famous archaeologist William Rathge, who was a garbologist, he studied landfills and could go back in a landfill that was 50 years old and still identify products that were in the landfill. He could, you know, he always, the classic slide was a Twinkie, that it was still a Twinkie, you know, 50 years later, scary. No, but he could also still identify a lettuce, a head of lettuce, you know, because a landfill is designed not to let things break down, because when things break down, you get leachate at the bottom of the landfill, which is just a mix of stuff, whatever's been put in there. I mean, it's, you know, it's not the stuff you drink, you know, and if that leaks into the groundwater, you get groundwater pollution. So the whole objective is to keep all of these things out. So everyone says, oh, it will degrade in the landfill. No, it's not supposed to. I mean, it does, it does over time somewhat degrade, that's why we do get methane. But landfills are designed so that they don't degrade. They don't want things to degrade because it creates this problem of mixed materials. So nothing degrades, I mean, when you see a product that says it degrades in a landfill, that's called greenwashing.
I had the chance to see where Stanford sends its organic waste firsthand when I joined Julie and several students on a tour of the Newby Island Resource Recovery Park. This facility, which is just across the bay from Stanford, is where all of the yard trimmings and food waste from campus get sent to, to be turned into compost.
I think you have the next biggest one.
Yeah.
So we have, that's five, and five, that's 10. You can take, you can take a total of six.
Five including. Including him?
Yeah.
We drove around the compost windrows. And spewing it into a huge pile.
It's so cool. It's just driving through the windrows.
Saw a lot of birds.
Birds. The birds.
That's so cool.
Whoa. This is cool. What he told me is that.
Oh, it's the compost.
They have 30 to 40 falcons on site to combat the seagulls. Wait, they like own those falcons?
Like fighting falcons?
Yeah, they like, they attack, they intimidate the other birds.
And at the end, got out to take a look at the finished product.
That's awesome.
So what was the compost facility like? What did it look like?
I thought it was going to be kind of like a factory or like very industrial looking and like with things to heat up your compost to the right temperature and make sure that all the stuff gets killed that needs to be killed and whatever. But it's actually just a bunch of piles of dirt. Like very, very big piles and very well-managed piles of dirt, but that's what it looked like. Okay, here's the facts that I learned. At this compost facility, they have the stuff come in and it composts for, I think, 80 to 90 days. And in that time, they have to turn it five times, and turning helps the decomposition happen.
Five times a day or five times in the whole 90 days?
In the whole 90 days.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so you just turn it and then let it sit for a long time. So like most of the time, you just have these piles of dirt. And the stuff seemed like it was primarily made out of yard waste, so not that much food waste.
They're dumping a bunch of yard trimmings into a truck and it's, it's shipping it all, grinding it down and spewing it into a huge pile.
So we saw a ton of like trees being chipped and then added to the dirt piles, or the compost piles, I guess. So the process is they bring in, they bring in their, the stuff that, the yard trimmings and the food waste, they make a pile out of it and then turn it occasionally for 90 days. And then after that time is up, and during that time, they have to measure the temperature of the compost every day, because you have to have everything at a certain temperature to kill like bad bacteria that you don't want in your soil. So they maintain the temperature, and it has to be hot enough for the compost to happen. But something I learned is this just happens naturally, like you don't have to heat it up.
Oh.
Yeah, so people on the tour who had home composting bins are really familiar with this. I guess it's really hot in there, like even in the middle of a snowy New Jersey winter, it'll be hot inside their compost bin.
Is that because the reactions that are taking place make it warm, like release heat?
Mm-hmm, yep.
That's really cool.
Yeah, so.
So then do they just measure the temperature to make sure that nothing's going wrong?
Yeah, there is a minimum regulatory temperature, I think it's 131 degrees Fahrenheit for commercial compost.
And it gets that hot?
Yeah, they run theirs at 145 degrees.
So if you stuck your hand in it, you would burn your head?
Yeah, we did, we stuck our hand, well, just the edge of it.
Oh my god. Oh, it is hot. It's like a hot shower.
Running about 120 degrees.
And then the other really interesting thing was that the piles of dirt were completely full of plastic bags. Like probably, I don't know how to estimate the density of this, but like every foot you would see a plastic bag.
And that was something that got there by mistake, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff that gets put in the compost bin that shouldn't. But yeah, in the filtering process, they get out all the trash. But it was pretty funny, when we were there, we saw the pre-filtered compost, and we found like really weird stuff in there, like there was a wiffle ball, there was a pair of boxers. And yeah, that had like been in the compost for 90 days.
Wow.
And like come out as boxers still.
That's really funny.
And there is also a huge problem with like those compostable forks and like compostable service, or I guess they call it, that doesn't really decompose at the temperatures that food decomposes at.
Oh, what temperatures does that require, higher?
I think he said something like 180 degrees, which is pretty, like you can't.
It doesn't happen naturally?
Yeah, and it's pretty dangerous to have like that much stuff that's that hot outside, so they can't get their, they can't have their stuff.
So that stuff just ends up getting filtered out?
Yeah, and it ends up in the landfill.
That's so interesting. How did we not know that? Like, because that's all over Stanford, like everywhere you go, like.
Yeah.
That's a lot. There's a lot of that, all over.
I think, I think Stanford is trying to start encouraging people to use reusable stuff instead of.
Compostable.
Disposable things, because basically you're still taking something, using it once and throwing it away, or like composting it, but it's not really getting composted, so.
Wow.
Let's just look at the finished product over here, so you can see that it does, that Glenn's able to clean it up and make it look good.
So what did it smell like in there?
It was, so it was totally outside and like super windy on the bay, and it didn't smell like anything. And we got out of the car at the, to look at the finished product really closely and like actually stuck our hands in and stuff, and it just smelled like really nice dirt. And it just looks, one of the students described it as like, if you go to a beach and there's like the gross sand, and then there's like the really nice sand that said the nice beaches, this is like the really nice dirt version. So it's like very soft and like has a lot of structure, which I guess the gardeners are into. And then the other really cool thing about this compost facility is that this one in particular sells the majority of its compost to places in the Bay Area. So the whole loop for your food waste to making it back into fertilizer and creating more food is like very local.
Very personal, yeah.
Yeah, there's not a lot of necessity for like trucks to drive really far distances with their very low, what's it called?
Miles.
Miles per, yeah, miles per gallon. And carting around these heavy things. So it's all very close and gets, like the whole circle happens right around this bay.
This piece featured the voices of students Amanda Martinez, Cecily Foot, Ava Lindstrom, William Greenbaum, Ken Chin, and Thomas Joseph. This is Green Grid Radio. Thanks for joining us today in our exploration of food waste. We've now reached part five, Waste Around the World.
My name is Dana Gunders. I'm a project scientist in food and agriculture at the Natural Resources Defense Council.
Dana recently wrote a really awesome report on food waste that can be found at NRDC.org, and that's where we got a lot of the crazy numbers we shared with you today, actually.
I'm interested in gaining more of an international perspective as well on the issue, and was curious if you've had any experience discussing this with people in other countries or seeing, or comparing the state of how we deal with our food and our food waste in America with other countries.
Yeah, I actually, I just recently returned from a trip to London to learn a bit more about what they're doing in England, because they've been much more active on this question, on this issue for at least six or seven years now. And there was quite a different mindset among businesses there that really, this was an opportunity to improve their brand, and they really wanted to help their consumers not waste food, and they saw it as something their consumers cared about, which I found interesting. In Europe in general, actually, they have taken this issue much more seriously. The EU Parliament actually set a target last year to reduce food waste by 50% by 2020. Really aggressive goal. And they've put millions of dollars into a joint EU project now, trying to measure it better and look at some of the key drivers. So there's a lot more action in Europe.
Here in California, similar directives are jump-starting the organic waste industry.
You know, looking at the big picture, policy is a really big part of the zero-waste movement, having a government or a university or a private business like Google or any other kind of large business make a decision that they want to do this. When you do that, then you, the marketplace, you set a signal to the marketplace that, oh, you're serious about this, you've made a policy. So the state has done, we have AB 939 in 1989 that said we had to divert 25% of our material from 1995, 50% to the year 2000. And now we have a mandate in California to go to 75%. So, and we also have a strategic directive from our state recycling board, called Cal Recycle, that says that we need to get organics out of the landfill. So all of these are sending market signals to the business community to say, we're serious about this, start some businesses, you know, build some facilities, do this, do that. At the same time, you're telling local government, we got to do something about this, so they hire staff. And all of this kind of works in this really interesting way where, you know, someone will start a compost facility, they'll invest money, they'll get capital funding to start a compost facility, because they know people are going to want to compost. And then that trickles out into lots of other little jobs. We need to build compost carts or recycling bins. We need to have a truck that can collect organics. It's a little different than a garbage truck because you have leaks and things like that. So all these things are creating jobs, research is happening, engineering, so everyone's getting involved in that, and then there's education. And so all of this creates those jobs, and then we And then we started to notice, oh, my goodness, look what we're sitting on here.
In the rest of the world, you know, particularly developing countries, it's a really different problem. And the interesting fact is that we waste about the same amount, uh, or we, rather we, about the same amount of food gets lost and, and isn't eaten in developing countries and developed countries, but the reasons are quite different and it's a really different looking problem. Um, over in places in Africa, they just don't have the infrastructure to get the food to market. And so they're, they really need, you know, better storage, they need refrigeration capacity, which requires electricity, they need better roads, so you don't have, um, trucks sitting there with food perishable in them and in high heat, uh, on these bumpy roads. And they also need credit and financing. So some of those basic development questions are really very closely tied to the food loss in developing countries.
So, so far, every time I've dug a bit deeper into thinking about how to live sustainably, things have gotten more complicated, like should I try to make my home more energy-efficient by, you know, getting better insulation, or should I just turn the heater off earlier? Like what's convenient and what's the right thing to do? There's a lot of gray areas and there's stuff that's, where it's impossible to have enough information about it. And you end up having to compromise a lot or just being kind of confused and unsure and then just giving up. Um, but even after digging around in it for a while, it seemed to me like lessening food waste is this like purely good thing. And that was, I, I thought that was great, but I wasn't sure if I had thought it through. So I asked Dana if she anticipated any of the unintended consequences that plague a lot of these sustainability solutions in addressing food waste.
Well, I think there are some things we need to think about, um, and really plan for as, as part of the reducing food waste. Uh, and that particularly goes back to farms because, you know, there, there could be some unintended consequences. If we were overly successful in reducing food waste and, and really reduced demand for food effectively, then, you know, what does that do for farmers if it reduces demand to the point where it puts them out of business and they, um, wind up selling their land
We have returned from closed session. And we are moving into our regular agenda, which is agenda changes, additions and deletions, of which I have none. Uh, and now city manager's comments. City manager's comments?
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Mayor, members of council, have a number of items to report on. Some of them are just sort of, um, intermediate updates on, on some issues in the news or in the community. The first of them have to do with the Edgewood Plaza Plan Community Zoning District and some questions related to the existing building at eleven oh one in Barcadero. We've heard from a number of neighbors and other residents who are concerned about the limited parking and some have asked whether recent tenant improvement work on the site is a factor in, uh, all of this. Our staff is conducting a thorough review at my request and I'll be reporting back to the council. Um, but the, all of the current work, recent work we see is within the scope of the permits for landscaping and HVAC work. We have yet to receive an application for use in occupancy, so we don't know the proposed tenant. But as I indicated, uh, within the next couple of weeks, I'd be able to report more definitively to the council and to, um, some of the neighbors where we are. Secondly, um, the ARB recently, just last week, actually conducted a preliminary review of architectural concepts that were related to a rezoning proposal that was filed actually in twenty-eleven that would permit, um, twenty-one new units rather than eleven on a vacant site on El Camino Real, these are, as housing. The, while the project itself is not subject to the, uh, pre-screening requirements in the municipal code with the council, I asked the staff last week to reach out to the applicant and the applicant has agreed to a pre-screening process. So council will, uh, have an opportunity to weigh in on this proposed, um, uh, application before it goes to, um, the Planning and Transportation Commission for initiation. So, um, the council had, um, had previously given us explicit direction related to PC zones. And while there certainly has been discussion, uh, about the potential impact of any upzoning, we've looked at this and, and council hasn't adopted an explicit policy. So I felt that it was best to, um, steer the applicant to the council, uh, initially so that you'd have the opportunity to, um, perhaps take action on the request right off the bat before any further work is done. The, uh, city is making six million dollars available from its housing trust funds for the development of affordable housing projects, community organizations and affordable housing developers that are interested in creating affordable housing are encouraged to apply by the deadline of June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. As you know, the city's housing trust funds are derived from INLU or impact fees paid by private developers who are building in the city. And the funds can only be used for the purpose of creating affordable housing and are offered in the form of thirty or fifty-five year loans. Over the past decade, the city has provided more than twenty-nine point four million dollars for the development of affordable housing, um, including the five point eight million dollar loan for the Maybell project, which has been repaid and is a funding source for this, uh, application. Okay, nifty news here. Uh, we just received word that Palo Alto has been named one of the top ten best cities for kids by livability.com. There are some age definitions for kids in their analysis. We did not stuff the ballot box with kids, uh, with kid-like natures, however. So, uh, the livability.com, as you know, is a national website that ranks quality of life and amenities of Americans smaller and mid-sized cities. You remember, we were named number one most livable city earlier last year. For this list of cities, the editors first identified cities with high concentrations of school-aged children, then took a look at how their schools stacked up and analyzed factors like childhood mortality rates, health insurance coverage, um, crime and safety, percentage of restaurants that feature kids menus. Also taken into account were the number of parks, playgrounds, libraries and recreational venues geared specifically for children, as well as the availability of great options for parents. Palo Alto was chosen for its exceptionally, uh, highly rated schools, pristine parks and vibrant downtown. The city's Mediterranean climate allows kids to enjoy outdoor activities such as biking, um, uh, year-round and attractions, including the Cantor Arts Center at Stanford, the public library system, our own children's museum and zoo, et cetera, provide children with several extracurricular activities. And our historic neighborhoods, tree-lined streets, shuttles and bike paths were identified as a perfect setting to raise a family. May nineteenth through the twenty-third is Emergency Medical Services Week, EMS Week, and Chief Nickel asked that I make this announcement. This will be the fortieth anniversary, as those of you at the Finance Committee heard from the chief, of our EMS division, paramedic and ambulance service for the Palo Alto Fire Department. Our agency has come a long way. Since they started, it began with one ambulance in nineteen seventy-five with approximately four hundred EMS calls for service. Currently, we respond to more than ten times that amount, forty-seven hundred EMS calls a year with over thirty-two hundred transports a year. I have a short update on the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park closure application that the, um, city attorney shared with me. Under city law, as you know, an independent hearing officer determines whether the park owner's proposed mitigation measures adequately mitigate the adverse impact on park residents within the limits of state law. On, uh, last week, on May twelfth and thirteenth, the independent hearing officer took written evidence and oral testimony. And on May fourteenth, the hearing officer received comments from neighbors and members of the public. The owner also submitted a letter, um, uh, increasing the reallocation benefits. He proposes to pay to the residents. The park residence lawyers have objected to the submission of this letter and the hearing officer will consider these matters and determine the next step. His decision on the closure application is expected in August or September and either party may appeal that decision to the city council. And then lastly, utilities, uh, activity update. Both water and sun featured prominently in recent weeks. Last Wednesday afternoon's record heat prompted a peak electric load reduction event. Staff called on large commercial customers participating in our peak load reduction pilot program to cut electrical use if possible, and three of them responded, including, uh, our own facility here at City Hall. Altogether, these customers were able to drop four megawatts of electric load, over four times the amount our staff, uh, had hoped for. And this excellent result helped bring the peak load down to one hundred and sixty-eight megawatts, which was still the highest peak load of the year so far. The power of the sun also prompted a small but enthusiastic group of nearly two dozen residents to attend last Saturday's Solar One-O-One workshop to evaluate whether a solar electric system made sense for their home. And on the waterfront, it was just announced that our Palo Alto community ranked number twelve in the country for its stellar level of participation in last month's National Mayor's Water Conservation Challenge. Palo Alto has ranked in the top twenty of this national contest for the last three years and all the credit goes to our committed citizens and corporate citizens who pledge to take various water-saving actions. Given its commitment to efficient water use, it's no surprise that earlier this month, a record crowd of eighty-five attended our Laundry to Landscape workshop, where people learned about using gray water, even got a hands-on opportunity to assemble a clothes washer drainage system. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Our next item is oral communication. This is when members of the public can speak on any item, not on the agenda. We have a few speakers here. Our first speaker will be Ken Horowitz, to be followed by Don Barr, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Ken Horowitz and I've been living in Palo Alto for over thirty years. Tonight, I'd just like to, um, address, um, a conversation I had the other night with, um, Jose Luis Moskovich, who's the director of our West Bay Opera Association. We're very fortunate that a city of our size, sixty-six thousand residents, and we have our own opera company that's housed and does three performances a year. But Mr. Moskovich had mentioned to me that, uh, they're hurting financially and that he's actually not drawing any salary this year to make sure that we, we have our performances. And, uh, even some of the, the singers are coming here, uh, doing performances free of charge. And he said to me, I, I would love to talk to the city council. And I said, you know, that would be a good idea. And I said to him, well, since you're busy, I'm gonna go to the city council on Monday night. And I have a card from him, a business card, and I'm gonna ask you to invite Mr. Moskovich to one of your meetings to talk a little bit about the West Bay Opera Association and to make it, make it, um, an agenda item in which you can hear from him and how the city could partner so, a little bit more with, uh, the West Bay Opera to make sure that it continues its stay here in Palo Alto. So I'd like to hand over the, uh, the business card to, uh, the city manager and then also to let you know that this weekend, Friday, Sunday, and the following weekend, Saturday and Sunday, um, the West Bay Opera is doing a performance of Magic Flute. We're very fortunate to have an opera company here in Palo Alto and I would hate to see them go, so I wanted to share that with you. Thank you for your time. Oh, one last thing, uh, since I don't come to very many meetings, I'd like to thank, um, council member Klein and Councilwoman Price. I know they're leaving the council this year. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Uh, Don Barr, to be followed by Roger Smith.
Good evening. Uh, I too am very pleased to be living in one of the top ten, top ten kids cities, uh, which is, I understand, a perfect setting to raise a family. I should remind you that there are one hundred and twenty-nine children in low-income families living at Buena Vista who love it just as well. Uh, and this is actually a follow-up on that study.
And this is actually a follow-up on that study I shared with you earlier. Professor Padilla and I wanted to know what's going on in the Barron Park neighborhood regarding views, and so we did a Stanford-sponsored research study, which I gave you the report of, in which we mailed 1,650 written surveys, which essentially is 100% of the addresses in Barron Park, and we got back 554 written surveys, about a 34% response rate, which is a very, very high response rate for this type of thing. We used questions of what's called a four-point Likert: "I strongly agree, I somewhat agree, I somewhat disagree, I strongly disagree." And we found that the respondents representing Barron Park were very aware of what's going on in Buena Vista, both the demographics and the policy issues involved. And 77% of Barron Park agrees that the Palo Alto community, the broader Palo Alto community, has a responsibility to help these residents find a way to stay in Palo Alto, and 81% said these kids need to be able to stay in the Palo Alto schools. We then asked them about their views on what we identified as the three most common proposals for redevelopment of the park. In terms of the sale of the park as proposed, 62% of Barron Park residents opposed the sale of the park, 38% support. Of the options other than sale of the park, approximately 70% of respondents support one of the two options that, actually, both of the options that have been mentioned, either purchased by the residents or joint redevelopment as market-rate and affordable apartments, with a slight preference for the joint redevelopment by market rate and affordable apartments. So, we have been able to conclude that the Barron Park neighborhood is very aware, supports the idea of keeping Buena Vista residents in Palo Alto, and their preference is and has a fairly wide support for the idea of a redevelopment of the park as rental apartments so long as a substantial share of the rental apartments are low-income and made preferentially available to the current residents of Barron Park. You have the survey there. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Smith, to be followed by Fred Balin.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank the council for the support they give to Avenidas, and if you ever have time, go over and have lunch there. It really opens your eyes to another segment of our community. I had occasion to go to the awards ceremony yesterday, their garden party, and I had a chance to talk to a number of people that make, in my opinion, Palo Alto one of the top 10 cities in the country. Also, a couple weeks ago, we had the Boy Scout honoring Bill Reller, and the cabana was full of like 300 people. It gave me a chance to talk to a number of people regarding the size of the council, and it seemed to be very much agreement that nine is too many. And several people said, you know, the county board of supervisors is five, and the school board's five, and most of them didn't know that San Mateo Council is five. But these are folks that don't come down here and spend three, four, or five hours waiting to talk to you, but I think these are people that are meaningful, well-meant, and I think would help if the council puts this on the ballot. That would help get this passed, and I personally think it would pass with a very large majority. But the efficiency, I think, kept coming up. It just would make it more efficient. And I read in today's Merc that Councilman Larry Klein mentioned the council has become busier and less efficient, and just by its very numbers, nine is less efficient than seven. So I would encourage you to put that on the ballot. I would encourage you to have that as a separate item and not confuse it with other items. And I don't know how the costs work, but I can't believe it would be a lot greater cost. So I would very much encourage you to think that hard and put it on the ballot, and I think it would save a lot of time, effort, and money than having a group of people have to go through the whole proposition process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fred Balin, to be followed by Art Lieberman.
Good evening. Start with a minor point. Fred Balin, is how I pronounce it, Madam Mayor. Sorry for the correction. What's the latest on the grocer for College Terrace Center? Four and a half years after final approval, the structures on the block are now demolished. A proposed grocer, the overriding public benefit of this PC, was revealed in the press in March. It is the son of the developer with no grocery experience but who registered the corporation name J&amp;A Markets last summer. But as per the special limitations on land uses in the PC ordinance, no building permit may be issued until there is a signed lease for a grocery store, enforceable against the tenant and approved by the city attorney. And the grocery tenant, if it is a party other than John Garcia doing business as J.J&amp;F, shall be subject to the prior approval of the city of Palo Alto and shall not be withheld unless the city reasonably finds that such proposed grocery tenant is not likely to be comparable in quality of products and service, as J.J&amp;F as it existed and operated on December 7th, 2009. How enforceable will a lease agreement be that is between father and son? How likely is it that a grocery owner with no experience will run a market comparable to J.J&amp;F? Those are key questions before the city now. Back then, amidst the devilishly successful but divisive PR campaign to, quote, "save J.J&amp;F," council members and staff focused wisely on a safety net, which is what we must properly use now, because even though J.J&amp;F was not saved, a one-block chunk of an unbroken stretch of neighborhood commercial zoning along college terraces will still become a regional office complex. And so you tighten conditions for another market as well as open possibilities. The grocery store's interior of at least 8,000 square feet shall exist within the development for the useful life of the improvements. The outdoor market at 2,500 square foot setback along El Camino shall be limited to grocery-related uses only. The grocery stores shall occupy and begin operations prior to any office tenant occupancy, and it shall remain in continuous operation as a grocery store except for brief closures for ordinary business purposes. And finally, if a market prospect comes along now that needs more space, it can be made available as specifically provided for via conversion of some contiguous office space behind the grocery's interior space. Good, but all this hangs on two threads. The first, and of note for the current PC reform process, is that there are no enforceable penalties if, for instance, the market closes sometime after it opens and the public benefit disappears. But the second is before the city right now, so let's be sure we get it right. Faithfully abide by the wording and intent of the conditions of approval related to selection of the new grocer. Thank you.
Councilmember Burt, did you have a question on this?
Wait until the end.
After. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Scharf, same thing with you? Okay. Our next speaker and last speaker is Art Lieberman. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilpeople. I wanted to bring your attention to an article in today's Post, if you hadn't seen it. It's an excellent piece of journalism by the Daily Post, Brina Kerr. The headline of the article, in case you didn't catch it, is "Residents Want the Company to Go." There's a picture. Maybe this will remind you of it. My hat. What we mean by that is the hazardous materials and the toxic fumes. The article continues from the front page and has, it's quite an interesting, in-depth article, has some historical photos that the journalists uncovered from the Palo Alto Historical Association archives, and also she found out some information from the Cal OSHA website about some exposure that employees at CPI had encountered from nickel fumes while working there for some period of time. I'm one of the residents who lives near CPI. We don't have anyone measuring our chronic exposures, so we don't have any information about chronic effects, but we are worried about acute effects of toxic fumes from the hazardous materials there. We're worried about an accident, for example, what happened in 2006 and again in 2008, the failure of equipment, which happened in 1985. Picture of that, consequence of that in the article, or in the future, a possible catastrophic disaster. In 2004, when CPI moved from San Carlos and centralized their hazardous materials here, the city's staff at the time made a serious mistake by not reaching out and informing residents of what was happening in their backyards. That was wrong. The fire department approved the plans for upgrade at CPI's plating shop, thinking that if acids and cyanides are packaged carefully and the hazardous materials inventories are listed in their offices, and they do inspections, which are actually announced inspections ahead of time, that would be okay. Again, that was wrong. And CPI completely reconstructed their shop and had the opportunity to move it to another part of the site away from residences, and they said it would cost them too much. They put money and profits before and in place of people's health and safety. That is wrong. So there is a study that is in process now that the staff is working on, and this topic will come to the council in the future, and I will look forward to appearing before you again at that time. So let me just finish by saying that times have changed. Not only do we have a different view about toxic materials and chemical safety, we now have a city staff led by a city manager who cares about residents' viewpoints, a planning department director, and a staff that understands and respects sensible and safe zoning practices, a new fire chief and a fire marshal who realizes that adherence to fire code requirements has its limits when it comes to their mandate to protect the health and safety of residents, a courageous city attorney who is dedicated to find creative solutions to problems and not simply prevent lawsuits, and a city council that is serious about outreach and citizen involvement in affairs that affect them and their city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Burt, you had a question?
Mr. Balin had brought up the issue of the J.J&amp;F site grocery lease and what has been submitted. What's the current, currently, what's the procedure by which the adequacy or validity of that lease would be reviewed?
I know that there is, councilmembers, I know there's been some preliminary review, but I don't know if the city attorney can help weigh in on the efficacy of what we have.
So, in my office, we did look at it for commercially reasonable and appropriate and customary terms, and it met that standard. It is a standard commercial lease for a business of this type. I believe the planning department is doing a slightly different look at the nature of the lease, and I'm not sure of the current status of that.
So I think one of the easy things is I'll get a written response out to the question in totality this week.
Councilmember Scharf?
So I had a very similar question to Councilmember Burt. Do we not have any ability to say it has to be commercially reasonable in terms of the background of the person running the store? I mean, I'm assuming there must be something behind that we can look into and say, "Is this really going to be a market? Is this really, you know, is this really okay?" I mean, if, you know, if you choose someone who has no experience in a grocery store and you say that meets, that's, I think, what the public's reacting to, and I think we need to look at this very carefully, and I'm not sure we are. So are we doing it?
We appreciate the question, and that aspect of it, I believe, was underway in the planning department, so let us get that response back to council.
And just briefly, when is the CPI thing coming to us?
Well, we are, the staff is continuing to meet on it right now. As a matter of fact, myself and the city attorney and the planning director have meetings tomorrow on this, and we don't have a specific date. We were targeting June, but I don't think we can settle on what the exact date is yet.
One of the things I'd like to see in that is possibility of whether or not a public safety building could go there.
You know what? It would be, it's fine to have questions. Let's hold back on making comments. Councilmember Holman.
Yes, again, going back to Mr. Balin's comments, how are the neighbors being informed of the status and process and progress of any evaluation of a grocer? Or is that in the planning department?
So again, that is a planning department area, so we don't have the staff here, obviously, to address that issue, so we'll have to come back to council on that.
Okay. Jim, maybe you could get back to us on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Clerk, do I have any cards? I do have one speaker. Do we have any more? Okay. Then we have one speaker for item number four on the consent calendar. I'm going to take that now, and that is Robert Moss on speaking to item number four. You will have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd, and councilmembers. When I looked at this originally, I kind of felt, well, yeah, you're starting your meetings at 6 o'clock, so make that the regular starting time. And then I got to thinking about it, and I realized that people who work, even a regular 9-to-5 work week, would have a terrible time getting down here at the beginning of a 6: o'clock council meeting if they had something important to talk about. And I looked at the comment that said, "Well, almost 2/3 of our meetings have started at 6:00 anyway." But usually, what you're doing between 6:00 and 7:00, or 6:00 and 7:30, is you're having a closed-session meeting to talk with staff about legal issues, personnel, things like that. Or, on some occasions, you'll have a study session, where there's just a lot of discussion back and forth between the staff, the council, and a few members of the public. So that hour between 6:00 and 7:00 is usually for non-business anyway. If you, however, start your council meeting at 6:00 for action items, discussion from the staff, the city manager's report, oral communications, a lot of people who'd like to participate won't be able to. So I would suggest that if you make the change, that you call the time between 6:00 and 7:00 reserved for either legal discussions in closed session, or, let's call them, study sessions, but state that the actual performance of council businesses, oral communications, reports from the city manager, the adoption of the issues that are not action and item agendas, those will be taken up after 7:00. And that way, you can call the regular meeting at 6:00, but the regular meeting is not something where people will have to actually be participating in. And that'll allow people who work to actually come down and attend meetings. Otherwise, you're going to find that you're going to have very little public participation in the council chambers. It'll be even emptier than it is tonight. So I would suggest you rethink how you want to define regular starting times for the council meetings.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, did you include the change language on?
On item number 5B.
On number 5B.
Yeah. We're going to need to include the change language of item number 5B, which we have at our places regarding the park improvement ordinance on the Magical Bridge capital improvement project. Would you like me to read it aloud? I can read it aloud. So the lead department is Public Works, and the title is Magical Bridge Playground Design and Construction Agreement between the City of Palo Alto and the Friends of the Magical Bridge in the Adoption of a Budget Amendment Ordinance for Fiscal Year 2014 to provide an additional appropriation in the amount of $1,874,182 for the Magical Bridge Playground Capital Project and $30,000 for the Art and Public Places Capital Project. Council is in the park, and this is a park improvement ordinance for the Magical Bridge. Did not, since the item 5B did not have the PIO title in the agenda title, the PIO may not be approved. The staff will return to council on June 2nd with a staff report to recommend the PIO adoption, and the first council reading of the PIO will be June 2nd, and the second reading will be June 16th. Would the?
With the change on?
With the change on 5B. Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Councilmember Burt, I see your light on.
Yes, I'd like to move removal from the consent of item four.
I need to have a third for that. I don't see a third for that, so that item is not removed. All right. I'm going to call for the vote on the consent calendar. Let's vote, please. And the consent calendar is approved unanimously. All right. Thinking that's the magical bridge. Let's take the applause. So tonight, we're taking up four items under action. The first is the Finance Committee Referral to Human Relations Commission. The city manager has requested that the The city manager has requested that the full council consider an item from the Finance Committee related to an action that they took on the April 15th meeting when approving the second year of the two-year funding of the HISRAP grants mid-cycle. Since this sets a potential funding increase in advance of the council's final budget decisions, it would be benefit—it could benefit by full council review before then. Tonight, council is being asked to support this change or consider a change in the future to existing HISRAP funding policy or maintain the existing funding level. This next item is item number nine, the utility users' modernization. We're putting—this is item is returning to council after direction to the city attorney to explore two issues. One, reaching out to the large users of utilities for their interest in continued discounts, and two, change the rate of the tax. Tonight, there is prepared ballot language so that we can take the action to officially place this on the ballot with an allowance for a change of rate, if so desired, with the elimination of the large user discount. And item 10, changes in development impact fees. Finance Committee took this item up on May 6 to approve the findings from the consultant study for the public safety building and general governmental facilities. This item can set in motion the ability to collect new impact fees in these two areas. Staff can—we'll take this item up with a presentation. I will then ask the chairman—Chair Berman—to summarize the committee's work, and we will continue and proceed from there in the normal order of committee work, going out to noncommittee members first with questions and ask questions and comments before returning to full council. And item number 11 is a discussion of the Santa Clara County Transportation Sales Tax Increases that Silicon Valley Leadership Group has found on their annual survey solid support for a ballot initiative to raise funds for transportation infrastructure in Santa Clara County. Ballot language is currently being drafted, and final polling focused on a number of possible improvements and impacts on county transportation. The initiative will require 67% voter approval. We will begin with a staff presentation, and I did invite Carl Giridano from Silicon Valley Leadership Group to present their background and findings. The primary purpose of this is bringing this item forward tonight is to become better informed on the measure and consider Palo Alto's interests. In the event that we'd like to have Policy and Services take this item up for deeper consideration, we have posted the agenda—we have reposted the agenda for tomorrow evening's meeting on May 20th for this option. Therefore, please use this item to ask questions and consider Palo Alto's interests with the material presented on possible improvements to our transportation needs. So returning back to item number eight, which is the Finance Committee's referral from Human Relations Commission. As I already announced, we're going to be taking this item up and with—first with the city staff presentation and then with the chair of Finance Committee. Then I will return to the Finance Chair for—as is the practice—we'll go out to non-Finance Committee members and then return to the chair to make a motion from the recommendation from Finance Committee. So, Mr. City Manager, would you like to take this item?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to try to keep the staff presentations short tonight. You have a number of, hopefully, clear items before you, at least before item number 11. And this item really has been brought to council. It was taken up at the Finance Committee as mentioned with the potential to expand the funding. In this case, it was identified in the amount of $200,000 into the HISRAP or the Human Services Resource Allocation Process for 2015, and it also would have engaged the Human Relations Commission in some review as part of that process. And I received a number of questions about this, and it seemed that while Finance Committee is not even halfway through the budget review, bringing this to council—for the council to establish some perspective and direction on this request would be in order. There's always the potential that—you know, you're going to have a series of trade-off decisions when you ultimately adopt the budget in June, and I do want to make sure that if there are some new policy initiatives or directives, the council, again, can weigh in advance and identify, do you want to proceed in this course? Do you want to make amendments or adjustments to the amount? Do you want to hold this over until you see the whole budget recommendations themselves? And this really is a chance just more for—less for the staff to be talking about this a lot and for the council as a whole to either ask questions or issue your opinions and recommendations. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the Finance Committee Chair.
Councilmember Berman, would you like to report out from Finance Committee, please?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at Finance Committee, it started off as a very innocent discussion about the HISRAP budget and approving the second year for the 14 agencies that are on a two-year contract and approving the fifth year for the two agencies that are on a six-year contract. During—I made the motion to approve the—I believe it was the HRC recommendation. It was seconded by Councilmember Burt. During discussion, somebody—and I'm not sure who, and the minutes don't say who, and I didn't go back and watch the meeting—but somebody suggested that we suggest that we send it back to the HRC for them to take a look and decide whether or not there were, you know, critical needs that either weren't anticipated when the contracts were originally approved or areas that we initially didn't think we could fund that we now think we could, and for HRC to make a recommendation to us of possible increased funding for new or increased needs. Vice Mayor Niss pointed out—made the suggestion that we—the initial recommendation did not have a cap on that amount. It was to go to HRC just for a general recommendation. Vice Mayor Niss suggested that we put a cap on that amount, and after discussion amongst the committee, it was approved unanimously that the cap be 200,000—approximately $200,000, which is the difference between the amount that was originally requested by the agencies and the amount that was approved. It was stressed by some of us on the committee that this was a max cap and that staff should make sure that the HRC understood that by no means was this approving that amount, but that this was to set a ceiling, if you will. That was the motion that was approved, as people can read from the minutes in the staff report. And the city manager, I think rightfully, given concerns that were raised by the council members, decided to bring it up to the full council.
Okay. I have no cards from the public on this, so I want to see if anybody who's not on Finance Committee has any questions on this item before we take it up. And Councilmember Schmidt?
Let's see, just a couple of questions. There are two groups that were discussed, those who have a two-year horizon and those with a six-year horizon. It was unclear whether the two-year expiration date coincides with the six-year expiration date. Is that right or not?
They—well, it eventually does because the two years and the six-year will come up at one point that they'll all be up at the same time.
In what year?
That's 2016, I think. I'd have to look at it again, but since—
Because the 2/15 is the end of the second year, so it would have to be next year. Is that right?
Right. But now that PAC and Avenidas are no longer in HISRAP, it alters that discussion because those two agencies will just be general services contractors at this point, starting next fiscal year.
Starting next year. I guess the recommendation from the Finance Committee is that the council is not in a position to make distinctions among needs, that really the HRC should do that. But the HRC now is no longer looking at the two-six-year thing. So is our motion focused on the two-year candidates?
That is something staff is looking for direction on as well. And that was brought up at the Finance Committee meeting, that we needed direction on that specific point.
Okay. Now, the Finance Committee seemed pretty explicit that you want to refer back to the HRC with just the two-year. Is that correct, outcome of the meeting?
I don't recall actually discussing whether or not it would apply. I don't think we restricted it from applying to Avenidas and PAC. I think part of the problem is that we're in a new landscape now than we were when we made this decision. And so I think, you know, it should come to council, and we should make a determination on that.
So there's no recommendation from the Finance Committee?
That's not my recollection. I'll turn to my colleagues on the Finance Committee if they recall anything differently, but I don't recall us recommending to restrict it just to the two-year.
Yeah, I guess there is an explicit mention in the Finance Committee approval and, again, in the staff recommendation that it go to the HRC, which would mean only the 14-two-year.
Well, and that was at the time—the Finance Committee discussion and recommendation was at a time when the HRC had oversight over all of them. So that has changed. That has changed in the interim, and that might change the fin—you know, that wasn't what we discussed, essentially. So we didn't weigh in on today's situation. We weighed on—it weighed in on what the situation was a couple of weeks ago, which was different.
Yeah. One last question. In the interim before this two-year—after this two-year period started, I think the council voted a special $250,000 two-year program for consulting and help for homeless outreach. Now, they are not included in the HISRAP group. Seems to me that we should be flexible enough that if there is something new or important from the council, that that also could be included in the package or the discussion.
Right. That's a two-year contract with the county, and that's not part of HISRAP. That's separate.
Okay.
It has been, but your point is potentially prospectively is a policy question when these type things come up.
That's right. If there's new money available, should the pool be wider than those that were here two years ago? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Scharf?
Thank you. So I had two questions. One of them's along the lines of Councilmember Schmidt's. I guess I'm still not clear on this. What I just heard was that when Finance Committee took this up, HISRAP had jurisdiction over both Avenidas and PAC. And so the question is, now that it doesn't—the way I read this is that if we just go ahead and say yes to 200,000 to the HRC, then Avenidas and PAC would not get any of that money. And so I guess my question really comes down to is if we say yes to this, are we deciding that PAC and Avenidas doesn't get any of this money? That's the way I read this.
I mean, I would say that that's a valid point that we need to discuss in our discussion this evening. And that's—you know, essentially, this is all coming up fresh on the table, and the council can make a decision as to how it wants that money to apply. I—you know, when the Finance Committee made the decision, HRC had oversight over all agencies. And so in my mind, the decision the Finance Committee made was that 200,000—that cap of 200,000 would apply to all agencies. That's my personal kind of interpretation of what we did, but other council members might see it differently, and now that the decision has changed, we probably need to change the final recommendation.
So my—also, my recollection is we voted on this last week. It was late at night, so it's a little hazy. But my recollection was we actually said that by taking PAC and Avenidas—really, certain council members said that, I think staff said that—by taking it out, we're not going to hurt PAC and Avenidas. At least, that was the arguments that were made. And if they're not allowed to compete for this money, it would seem that we are hurting.
So in my mind, that's a discussion topic for tonight, that we should—that should be part of the conversation we have. I wasn't going to speak to it in my opening comments, but I think you're right. I think both of you are right, that that's something that needs to be discussed and determined.
Okay. And then the second question is the staff's recommendation is regarding where the money comes from. So I guess I just want a clear understanding in the budget. What staff's suggesting is this comes out of council contingency, which means it's really an off-budget item. And we have a 250,000 council contingency, so the sense would be use all of council contingency, pretty much except 50,000, for this this year. And is that—that's what staff's suggesting? And why is staff suggesting that? Why not—I mean, we're going through the budget, and I guess you could do a budget amendment for 2014. You're saying the money's not there for 2014. And then in 2015, the notion is if we continue on with this, if we say that we want this to be an ongoing thing, and is that before us tonight? So go on.
Yeah, so first of all, the funding that we're talking about would be for fiscal year 2015. Secondly, I think that the staff recommendation just included this because of sort of the forced requirement of identifying a funding source, and in a sense, the staff doesn't really have the discretion to kind of make up a new funding source for something at this stage in the process. And third, though, your point about the council isn't bound—if you want to proceed with this—and taking it out of contingency, and this whole process presumes—it's—at some point goes back to the HRC. You get a recommendation either to Finance or the council, and any time along that way you could identify a new funding source to fund this and not have to have it come out of contingency. I mean, that's—that's part of the main point I was trying to make about the council will want to consider what you do here in the context of all of the different budget decisions you have. I mean, it could be that the council makes recommended cuts to the city manager's proposed budget and wants to reallocate that funding in different ways without even touching the council contingency. I mean, all those options are available, but I don't think the staff really felt that it was in a position to go ahead and make that recommendation at this stage.
So I guess that's sort of my question is why is this not part of the regular budget process where you say, we either have the additional 200,000 for fiscal year 2015, and if so, this is where it's coming from? Is that because we need to get the HRC looking at it now and knowing we're going to do it?
Sure.
Is the budget that tight that 200,000 is going to be a problem to come up with a budget source?
No. What happened was, Councilmember, that the allocation for fiscal year 2014 and '15 was set at once for two fiscal years. So basically, the direction to staff was to ensure that the allocation '15, which was approved last year, is consistent with the budget, so that's what we did.
And we'd just add, I mean, a little bit of thing that's a difference here is that the council—I mean, the Finance Committee during the budget review process can certainly, you know, reprogram money, make budget cuts, you know, ask that different revenues be associated with a particular funding issue. In this particular case, just there's some concern that you could also have the committee asking another council committee to do a bunch of work that may not pan out and have ultimate council approval, so it might be good to come and get a kind of preview okay on that, knowing that it's in the budget when it gets adopted itself, so you don't sort of have people spending their time or even having some constituent groups out there maybe get their hopes up for, oh, we'll get some extra funding, and then there isn't a willingness on the council to provide that funding in the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Chair, did you want to make any further comments?
Just one—two quick clarifications. One is—I just want to make sure everyone understood that it was staff's recommendation as to where that 200,000 would come from, but it was the Finance Committee that came upon the number—the $200,000 number. And the second—and no, I'll stick with that one for now. That's fine. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to continue with non-Finance Committee members for questions first. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you. Let's see. In general, I support kind of the direction of this. I think it's a very useful modification in terms of funding HISRAP. I think the fact that we continually recognize that there are additional services and needs within the community, that the city will never fully be able to address everything with the resources that would fully be required, but the extent to which we can make some additional allocations, I think it's extremely important. Now, I had two questions and comments about items within the HISRAP discussion. Should I hold those for now and just talk to what's in front of us?
We need to try to get our heads wrapped around what happened at the Finance Committee to see if we can find support for the motion that they all approved 4-0. So we're just trying to get the questions and answers out because this is a change of the policy that we've already established for how we're operating with HISRAP, so we're just trying to see if we can catch up right now. So if we can hold some of the more in-depth—I'm not sure if this is— So if we can hold some of the more in-depth, I'm not sure if this is actually the time to go into some of that right now as well.
Okay, because I did want to make sure, I wanted to ask questions about two items, but I'll defer that for now. The second comment I have is the, we have before us just sort of one item here. The issue, and the staff report addresses this, to an ongoing approach to this could be part of our motion as well, right? We could ask that the, this item come back for further discussion regarding if this, the initial part were to pass, to have the HRC and staff come back with additional funding models for sustaining this allocation. And that could be part of this discussion as well.
Right. That's when we get to the action part. I'm just trying to get those that were not on Finance Committee.
To ask questions. Okay.
Caught up with, with, with what our existing policy is and what this, and how come this is changing it.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think everyone has spoken to this issue, the staff, the HRC, community members, and recipient agencies, is the fact that over the last several years, there has been a slippage in funding that's significant and the cost of providing services, particularly for nonprofit agencies, continues to rise. And if we're really serious about providing services that are needed, that this kind of an adjustment, in my opinion, is, is important, necessary, and way, way overdue. So I really appreciate the fact that this came, this motion, this, these concepts came forward to us tonight, and I'm very hopeful that we'll move in a very positive direction. It's very clear that the needs don't go away. They change, and I very much appreciate the work of the staff and the HRC in identifying changing needs in our community.
Councilmember Klein.
I want to start out, but I think we're limiting ourselves to questions right now rather than comments like, and Councilmember Price appreciates the process, but I think that the, I thought that was going to be later in the evening.
Well, I'm trying to keep it to that so that we can kind of all get up to speed and we can get caught up with what happened at the meeting and why we're, why we're talking about it tonight, to tell you the truth. So if you could carry on from there.
Good. Thank you. A couple of questions. First, let me start with the staff recommendation. In the third line, asking the Finance Committee, we're proposing that HRC revisit potential funding, I'm quoting now, for underfunded, new, and emerging needs for agencies. And I want to focus on the new because I would, I read the word new meaning something that wasn't considered by staff and the HRC in their previous decisions. Am I putting too much emphasis on this or what was, what's the meaning of the word new in that context?
I don't know if staff wants to take a crack at it.
I'd be happy to take that. I think that came in the context of the presentation that I made to the Finance Committee in explaining that the Human Relations Commission was doing a supplemental needs assessment with all of our major agencies on the two-year contracts and that during that supplemental needs assessment, they had brought up things that were new to those agencies as gaps that had just been identified, that were critical needs that they had identified in the community. So it's new in that context that they had just, it's something that had bubbled up for those agencies, that they had identified a new need that they really felt a need to address.
Well, let me follow up on that. All of the agencies obviously had submittals as to how much money they were asking for, and you have a chart listing those numbers.
Correct.
So is the quote "new" included in those requests? Or do you see that as being, the new being something beyond what they've already requested?
It was, it could be theoretically beyond what they requested at the beginning of their two-year cycle.
I, I think what Councilmember Klein is asking is, is anything they requested at the, at the outset prohibited from being considered? Is that?
Yes, or is, or are we really encouraging people to go beyond? I'm looking at your chart that's on page 184 of the, and that chart, it says the 2013, 2015 agencies request for funding per year, obviously. And then there's a whole list of, of numbers. So, and presumably the agency in making that request had in mind projects A, B, C, and D.
Correct. And not all of them were funded at that point.
Correct. Okay. So I'm, again, trying to just understand what new means. If they now have a project Z in mind, would that be considered part of the process that's being requested or not?
That would be up to the will of the council. I mean, they, there were new needs that were brought to the attention of the HRC when they did their supplemental needs assessment.
So I think our understanding at Finance was that yes, Z would be, project Z would be, you know, open to being funded.
Well, I'm restraining myself from commenting at this point. My last one is, or last category. You've used, or the committee used as one factor in coming up with this $200,000 figure, the agency's request for funding. And why? Why not some other number? Why not half that or, or, or that plus?
What was half that?
It was half of the unfunded requests by the agencies, correct Mika?
No, it's the full unfunded.
It's the full amount.
It's the full amount. So, so.
The difference between the amount requested in 2014 and the amount received?
Is 200,000.
Oh, okay.
So, so I can't, so I didn't make that specific recommendation and I, I think we were looking for some logic in finding a cap. And, and that number was thrown out as a logical maximum amount. One is obviously free, as I think you do, to disagree, well, I won't assume that your questions are, are comments, but, but I think I see where you're going with this.
Thank you. You're a quick learner.
Yeah, it's only been an hour. So, so, you know, I, I think we are all free to disagree with, with that number that was chosen.
Right. And if I may interject, that's the difference in the amount that the 14 smaller agencies requested and were funded. That did not include PAC and Avenidas' request and actual funding level.
Well, was there any consideration given to the fact that it looks like the amount requested as compared to the amount allocated for the smaller agencies varies tremendously? Some got 100% and some, or, and some got, what's the lowest, some got way under 25%.
So that, that was briefly discussed at Finance and, and that was discussed in the context that the money that we, the ceiling that we were setting of $200,000 did not break down to individual agencies. And so Dreamcatchers, for instance, which requested 55,000 and only received 8,000, we weren't then saying, well, Dreamcatchers could receive an additional 47,000. We were saying that that $47,000 delta is open to all agencies. So, so that was the extent of the conversation about that discrepancy.
You, you set the $200,000 as a ceiling. Do you have any doubt that it won't be used in full?
I'm not allowed to make comments at this stage. I'm just allowed to answer questions. I guess that was a question. I'll save, I'll save my comments for when it's comment time.
Well, I'd like, so the answer, don't you think?
It was stressed by, a couple of us on the Finance Committee, myself included, to stress to the HRC that that was a cap and that, I think I might have said at some point that I wouldn't support the full amount, but I'll save my additional comments to, to when it's time to make those comments. Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions on this. First, it looks to me like the order of business was to, the original staff recommendation was the funding allocation as recommended by council to fund the second year of these grants. Did that, has that been done yet? Has that been authorized by the Finance Committee? I don't see that as the motion here, but was it a subsequent motion that night?
I don't think it did. I think it kind of went on hold to wait until this conversation took place.
And it's my understanding that the grant request is for a two-year cycle. So we have no pending request. This would be a search and find request or what, how is it that was expected to, that the HRC would address this? I'm the liaison to HRC right now and they are going through a very rigorous process of finding out the needs of the community. I don't think they've gotten to a stage of kind of having a conclusion about any of those findings yet. I think they're trying to formulate that, those findings with real integrity so that the entryway into the next two-year cycle can be really thoughtful and contextual, quantitatively and qualitatively, and really be a support to you when we go out through that application process, when the applications come in. So at this point, HISRAP is just that, isn't it? It's the application procedure that we have, a two-year process.
Correct.
Why is it then that, that Finance Committee has to approve the second year of the grants then if they are approved the first year?
In theory, I think it's just having the city manager release, you know, approve the second year of that contract.
Okay.
It's, it's in practice always gone to the Finance Committee. As I explained to the Finance Committee, it's kind of gone for a couple purposes. It's gone as an update for what's happening with HISRAP. We kind of give a couple feel-good stories about what the agencies have done for the money, gives the agencies an opportunity to share some highlights, to say thank you to the council for their support. And the recommendation has always been that the city manager have the authority to, you know, release the, approve the second year of funding of a two-year funding. And it's usually been at, at the same level as it has been the year, as year one, except if staff is requested because of overall budget issues with the city to request a, a budget cut.
Right. So in this case, though, we're trying to do it the other way, but we don't have, the only thing we have active is the former grants that were not fully funded. So there's no.
Correct. The intention was not to go out to a greater pool to assess any other unmet needs by agencies that are not currently HISRAP funded. It was to look at the needs that have been expressed to the HRC during the supplemental needs assessment process and to, with whatever criteria is given to the HRC to make some recommendations to the council on, for increased funding.
But only off of previously looked at grants, not, not a new cycle of sending out requests?
No.
So you would take up all of these agencies, you would only look at these agencies?
That's correct.
Okay. And what was not funded last year, not what emerged between last year and this year?
Right. We would not look back to any agencies who submitted an application and they were not funded last year. We, we were not planning on going back to those.
So this was a very limited and narrow look at, as opposed to broad and, and voyeuristic almost. Okay. Those were my questions. That concludes those that were not on the Finance Committee. So I think we're up to speed, hopefully. I'd like to turn this back over to the Chair of Finance. I understand that either we can take up this motion or you can pass on this motion.
So I'm told that normal practice is for the Chair of the Committee to move the motion that came out of the Committee. I'm not inclined to do so, so I will leave it open to any of my colleagues who want to move the motion that came out of Committee. And then I will save my comments for the proper time.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Bird, I'm assuming that's what you're going to do here?
I can do that.
Okay.
So I will move the staff recommendation, which is that, well, actually the Finance Committee recommendation, which is captured on the bottom of page one over the top of page two. And then I'll have some comments and actually a question. Okay. Can you toggle the screens because the screen's all blank. So first, Mika, one of the things that we discussed at the Finance Committee was, as you mentioned, we've, we've had a lot of years where we've struggled over cuts to our HISRAP funding. We've now had a couple of successive years of budget surpluses, and that was the context by, in which the Finance Committee was considering this. Can you, the staff report didn't review a discussion that we had at the Committee, which was how much in cuts we've had, both actual cuts and essentially inflationary adjusted cuts in recent years.
Sure. And up until 2003, there is, from 1993 to 2003, there was CPI increases of 3% every year to HISRAP. In 2005, 2009, there were 5% cuts each of those years to the HISRAP process. I'm not sure if this answers your question, but I went back and I have each of the HISRAP budget amounts from the year 2003 to 2000, and to our present year. And in 2002, 2003, the HISRAP budget was 1.3 million. And now we are 10 years later and we're $100,000 less.
And, and the other discussion was around as a percentage of budget. At the time, in 2002, 2003, that 1.3 million, I think we had a discussion around whether it was something over 1% of our budget. Now we're well below that.
Well below 1%.
Okay. So that was an important context for this. Even with this proposal, we would not be approaching the proportionate share of our budget toward HISRAP that we were a decade ago. And second, there were questions around how open-ended this was. We actually, I think, did have some limited discussion at the Finance Committee about Avenidas and PAC and that we wanted to leave open the potential that they would have a proportionate increase as well, is my recollection. It's not captured in the motion, but when you look, specifically in the motion, when you look at the wording of the motion, it does allow for that. It's a broad motion in that sense. And I think that was conscious based upon where those two agencies stood in our, in our process at the time that this motion was made to council.
Yeah. It was left open because of the uncertainty of what was coming to council last week.
One other thing that we discussed at the Finance Committee meeting, but we did not put it in a motion, it was just a concept. It wasn't an omission not to be there, but that was whether we should be looking at a rainy day fund for HISRAP. So our greatest needs tend to be in economic downturns, and that's when our budget shortfalls happen. So if we are looking at essentially additional funding, because we're in stronger budget years right now, should some portion of that, say 50,000 out of the 200,000 hypothetically, go toward a rainy day fund, but that is toward HISRAP funding? And so in our stronger years, we, we make sure that we don't have to make those cuts when social services are most needed in other downturns. And it, I, I will add that it was not, my understanding, and I don't think the understanding of my colleagues, that this would be coming out of council contingency fund. We thought we were going to be examining this in terms of the budget and it would be a budgeted amount, not from the contingency. And so that, that remains my outlook on that. And, and the other context was that we have in successive years seen that there were programs that the HRC viewed as very worthy and meeting critical needs in the community that were, they were not able to fund or not fully fund with the dollars that were available for HISRAP. And that we wanted to give them the opportunity to examine if we were in a budget period where we could afford to put more money into HISRAP, what specifically recommendations would they make? And as Chair Berman stated, we explicitly said, this does not mean we are committing to 200,000 additional dollars. We're saying up to that and we want to hear which among the things they had to deny previously, would they strongly recommend for, for funding if they had some additional funds? And were there any other new programs from the agencies that had submitted previously that they thought merited special attention and consideration at this time? So that. So that, I think, was the context of our discussion.
Which in theory would mean that not every agency that is currently a recipient would receive an increase.
Let me...
Correct.
Right. Okay. And we've got a second, and then we can go out to Q and A. Councilmember Holman, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, please. And I have one question first. The, is this an attachment? Attachment 8A, which has the chart of agencies. On every one of those, except for Avenidas and PAC, there is a requested amount, and it's because those are six-year programs. But when this goes back to the HRC, what means will they have to be able to look at what the request was versus what was allocated?
For PAC and Avenidas? The last time, I went back, and each of those agencies, the last time when they were up for this, this current six-year contract, asked for about $40,000 each, more than they were given.
Okay. All right. So I agree with Councilmember Burt that this wasn't identified at the time of the Finance Committee discussion, that this would come out of, as I recall it anyway, out of the council reserve, that this would be a budget, a budgeted item. And I'm wondering also if, because what we're doing in this motion is we're doing two things. We're authorizing the HRC to potentially utilize some additional funding up to the $200,000. We're also giving the HRC direction, I would think, and I looked to the maker of the motion as well, on a range of a couple of other things. So given that, Councilmember Burt mentioned his good idea, and I give him credit for that, of setting up a rainy day fund. So I would add as a, suggest as an amendment to this, that the HRC identify a funding amount to launch a rainy day fund for HISRAP funding. And I'm not indicating that it should be a part of this...
I actually think that's more the function of Finance Committee recommending to the council and then HISRAP to instead look at programs rather than finance. So I'll decline, even though I support the concept, I, I'll decline it on the process basis.
Well, I'm going to argue that just for a moment here, and that is, if I can't, I can't, because it was declined.
Yes. Just a sec. There's no second to this?
Yeah. So, okay. All right. So I will leave that to the side. I'm just looking at my notes here. Hang on just a second. Yeah, my other was related to that, so I have to leave that to the side as well. The only other comment I will make is, it's not captured in the minutes, but we did have some discussion about the 1% of budget, and Minka's numbers are pretty clearly indicating that, actually, it's even more than a decade, it's 12 years. Over 12 years, we have declined our HISRAP funding by $100,000. And that, for me, is a failing of our actions to properly fund the HISRAP needs. So I'll leave that at, that and move on.
Councilmember Niss, I mean Vice Mayor Niss?
So although I'm on the Finance Committee, I'm finding myself coming down in a different spot tonight, and, and I want to tell you why. I also, and I looked back at the HISRAP, I had some conversations with the county. Many of these are, many of these are funded through some county funds as well. Would you agree?
That's correct. Most of these agencies have a wide portfolio of funding.
Yes. And, and I recognize them very frequently from the county. And during that same period of time that you're discussing, what was happening is that, is that we were also cutting at the county level, rather substantially. And this is the first year they've been able to add in, and those who are here from the Magical Bridge discovered the same thing. We couldn't find any money for them in 2011, and in 2014, they have found a very substantial amount, and I'm absolutely delighted with that. But looking back over what you couldn't do for almost 10 years, I think, is a good reflection, but I don't think it really takes us to the point where we need to beat ourselves up because that didn't happen. So let me tell you why I got to my decision tonight to not support where we're headed in, in this direction. At Finance, just the other, two nights ago, Councilmember Burt mentioned two or three things that were very persuasive. This year, with our budget, we're taking money out of reserve. We're taking more than $2 million out of reserve to balance, to balance our budget. And secondly, Councilmember Burt also made a very persuasive argument, saying that he thought 17 new personnel could perhaps be, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but they're all on record. I, I think you really questioned, after cutting back over the long period of time you have cut back, whether or not this was all justified. Am I correct? Close enough?
I'd be glad to respond.
Okay. So...
Not at that.
Just, just to say that I, I've, I've heard both of those things, and, and they, they both were sobering to me. Because when indeed we are essentially taking from our own rainy day fund, from our reserves, in order to fund the HISRAP this year, seems like we have gone off our process, we are setting a new precedent, and, and I think that, that overall, we alter our policy by doing that. And I, I find all of those difficult to support. If we talk about what happens with HISRAP next year, then I think that's the right time to start looking at additional funding for these. But I would also reflect on something that somebody else mentioned, which is there are very different funding levels for these different, for these different organizations. As some of them may have been, Councilmember Klein who said this, I don't remember. Some of them got 10%, some of them got almost the entire amount. Five of them got nearly the entire amount, and most of those are very close-to-home agencies. I noticed that. Some of these are, were located elsewhere, even though they serve us well. So it was, it was interesting to analyze what HRC did with this, and I'm going to guess, Minka, that you were very involved in, in helping them organize that. So although I'm not going to support the motion as it's written, I certainly am open to looking at increasing this for next year, and I think that would be very appropriate.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, I enthusiastically support the motion. I think it is great that we do have open light on the future, that there are some fundings, whether they come from the council, fund itself, or through the Finance Committee as we work through the budget, that we are getting money to some people who need it the most, trying to rebuild at least a share of the budget that has existed in the past in Palo Alto. I guess other important things in the motion is we are turning to the HRC to review. I think it's a sign of confidence in them to play that role, to help us through the I think a third element that's really important in this is that we're focusing on critical needs. We are not giving proportional investments to each, but to identify those needs that are the greatest. I would like to put in a personal plug for critical needs. I think one of the things that has been identified since this two-year cycle began was the homeless issue in Palo Alto, and that was exacerbated to some extent by the council through some of the restrictions we put on vehicle habitation, parks use, and so on. And I think we have established an obligation, a public obligation, to spend money on things like training, mental health, outreach, shelter, food, and so on. So I think this is an opportunity for the HRC to say, gee, that is a, a new perspective from the time that we began this process, and the council is sensitive around that issue. And that should also help us as we move into the new cycle to help define what the critical needs of the city are. So again, enthusiastic support for the increased allocation to the HISRAP.
Councilmember Klein?
I will be voting against the motion for a variety of reasons. I certainly agree with what Vice Mayor Niss has stated, but I have several other concerns as well. The first is I think the process was flawed. We had a two-year contract process in place, so we'd have certainty, and that, as some of the questions earlier indicated, the idea was that the second-year approval should, was going to be pro forma. Instead, from what I read in the minutes, it was just sort of a, almost off-the-cuff reaction that the city has more money this year than it's had in many years, so therefore we ought to spread some of it around. Maybe that wasn't the case, but that's the way I read it from the minutes, and also from the way the media presented it to us. And I don't think that's good policy at all. I think that if we're going to have increases in this, that needs to be much more carefully I have to say that I don't think $200,000 is a cap. I think it really is both a cap and a flaw, a floor, excuse me, and a flaw as well. If I was on the HRC, I would really think that I had $200,000 to allocate, or maybe 199,500, something of that nature. So I don't think we should kid ourselves. The 1% test is interesting. Nobody can point out quite where it comes from. And I would say it needs to be examined as to whether 1% or any other number is an appropriate amount for us to be spending of our budget on HISRAP-type beneficiaries. I would point out that our city situation has changed a great deal since the last time the HISRAP allocation to these size organizations totaled 1%. Since that time, we have identified very, very significant additional obligations of the city, primarily in the area of pension, healthcare, and infrastructure. We need to spend a lot more money in those areas than people realized 10 years ago. And that doesn't look like it's going to change. Lastly, the obligation which we have voluntarily assumed on the HISRAP process, I think, needs to be reexamined. And I think if nothing else, this has been a useful process in saying, we need to give this some deeper thought. Should we be spending this amount, 1%, or any other, any other amount, given that many, all of these agencies do not fall within our normal financial obligations? These are primarily funded at the county level. Councilmember Schmidt, I think, has correctly pointed out that we've assumed another obligation in this category, $250,000 for homeless. I draw a different conclusion from it than he does. It seems to me, if you add the $250,000 into the other money we're spending on HISRAP, we're back up over the 1%. And I think we have need to take a careful look at just what we're doing in that, given the fact that social welfare is not one of our primary obligations. So for those reasons, for the fact that I think the process was flawed, and that I think that we need to really think much more carefully about spending more money, just because we have the possibility, the potential of doing it that this year, I think we should vote no. But I think then, either at this meeting or some subsequent meeting, when properly agendized, that we ought to direct the HRC and the Finance Committee to take a deeper look about what we're doing in the HISRAP process and where we should be going in it.
Councilmember Berman?
So I have a quick question for staff. I'm intrigued by the rainy day fund idea, but I think it's made a little bit more complicated by the fact that we took PAC and Avenidas out of the HISRAP grouping. Is it possible to set up a reserve fund for PAC and Avenidas now that they're no longer, considering we just kind of changed them to contract by contract?
Well, we, yeah, we can do that, obviously.
It wouldn't necessarily be titled that way, I guess.
Yeah. And it's, it's, I mean, just with two agencies there, you know, what, I think you'd sort of have this tendency to start to think, oh, that's default funding, you know, that's there. It's a little different when you've got 14 or more, and there's a reserve fund, and there's still some sense that there would be some...
Well, it would be a default rainy day fund, I agree, but, but the, I mean, the purpose of it would be for if the economy tanks and, and revenues fall, that's, that's there for, I guess, I would say that would be there for senior services and, senior and childcare services, or something like that, to generically encompass it without defining which organizations it's necessarily earmarked for.
Yeah. Well, I think you can, I mean, what, what you're really doing, whatever the definition of rainy day fund versus a reserve, you're, you're trying to establish, actually, it's more of a sinking fund almost, for the future, that if, because you want to at least maintain the funding at a static level, and if you got in a situation in the future where it dropped below that, you had money available to sort of stopgap on that.
Correct. Which I think of as a rainy day fund, but, but there could be different. So I'm going to offer a substitute motion, and I'll save comments until if anybody approves it. But the substitute motion is that, is there a way to, I apologize, to format this so I, it's not all on the screen right now? I don't know what's going on, but it's shifted off, or, I can look up here. There we go. So I'm going to change it to not to exceed the, everything's the same except for bullet point two, or sub-point two would say not to exceed, and now I lost my total.
Change against you. Stand for...
Well, it's a little more complicated than this. Deal. Thank you, Councilmember Burt. So I'll offer this as an amendment first, and it's... Yeah. The, the concept is, is to raise it by 2.6%, which was the increase, which was a CPI increase for last year, which would be a total of, five, six, eight, plus 9052, is 31,000, we'll say 32,000. The problem with it...
I'm sorry. I was declined.
Fair. So now I'll offer it up as a, as a substitute.
We want it as an amendment.
What's that?
We want it as an amendment.
Well, it just got, it just got declined.
You want it as a...
You can just make it an amendment.
Yeah. You're going to need to get a second.
Got it. So, so as an amendment, not to exceed 32,000, or 30, $31,620. No sense, Councilmember Burt, both literatively, literally and figuratively for you. But not to exceed 31,620 for both the two-year agencies and the six-year agencies, you know, both, both those agencies that are still under HISRAP and the agencies that used to be under HISRAP.
For what time period, Mark?
For this year, for a year. I mean, it's, it's for this year.
Fiscal year 2015.
For fiscal year 2015.
For both the age, so everyone, all of the 14-plus PAC?
14-plus PAC and Avenidas divvy up to 31,000?
Correct. So 31,620 is 2.6% of the total budget of 1.216 million. That included both PAC and Avenidas.
And, and because you've still got 200,000 in there, does this override the 200,000?
This is replacing point number, bullet point number two. So there, in my, in my amendment, there is no 200,000. This is offering a 2.6% increase essentially on what we used to call HISRAP funding, but is now more complicated because we took PAC and Avenidas out of it, which is why I was having trouble articulating how to say it.
So I will second it, but, but with hesitancy, and I'll explain it when I get So I will second it, but with hesitancy, and I'll explain it when I get there. But right now, it's on the board.
Yep. Thank you for the second. So it's not often that you get a second bite at the apple. And this was the idea that I came into our Finance Committee meeting having. The conversation went sideways a little bit, and it seemed like the other colleagues on the committee agreed around a number, so I went along for sake of agreement. But it wasn't necessarily something, you know, but, but as I stated at, at the meeting, I wasn't comfortable with the $200,000 amount. It's, you know, we might decide that we want to increase our funding to these agencies, but it needs to be a bit more strategic of a decision than, than just the decision that was made the other day. So the reason that I chose this number is because there's some logic to it. It's the CPI increase from last year, and I'm perfectly comfortable with altering the contract mid-two-year term to make that increase. We'd have to, you know, make it explicit to the HRC that, as I think has happened in a previous year, that we'd want that funding to apply to Avenidas and PAC as well as the other agencies, because the 2.6% was part of the total that included their budgets. But I think this is a bit more...
Specific.
Specific and strategic of a way to do it. And then, you know, if we decide in future years that we want to increase it dramatically more, we can make that decision. But I also think that this is an amount that's pretty reasonable for the budget that we have and doesn't get us into too much harm down the road. I also think that we should have a discussion in the future about a rainy day fund, but given the, the changes that we've made to this entire process, it's a little more complicated. And so I'll leave that out of tonight's motion and suggest that that be something that come back to Finance Committee at another time.
Vice Mayor Niss, would you like to speak to your second?
So this allows me to take my Grinch hat off just a bit, but I, again, I'm also reasonably good at math, and I think that this amendment makes a great deal of sense as it looks at number two on the original motion. I think this is a good motion, Councilmember Berman, because it gets the specificity in this that doesn't exist already. And it also means that there's not going to be a food fight in the, in the meetings that take place. Offering up $200,000 is a, is a good deal of money, and I, I think, too much, and would create friction within that group that I don't think would be advantageous to anyone. So glad to support this amendment.
I'm going to go back to those that have not spoken yet since we've had a motion. Councilmember Scharf.
You know, I think it'd be better to actually go to people that want to speak to the amendment right off.
The amendment? Well, I can't tell, that's the thing, so...
Yeah, clear your board.
Okay. All right, the board is clear. Who, who would like to speak to the amendment? Councilmember Burt.
Yes, just three quick points. First, in response to Councilmember Klein's arguments around the needs for infrastructure and pension benefits being different since 2002, 2003, those things have actually been, are being addressed.
Yeah, this is not speaking to the amendment.
Yes, I'm speaking to why I think the amendment is not appropriate. And it, it has to do with whether we can afford the higher amount.
Okay, we'll start there so that I can follow. Right now, it's sounding like you're talking about somebody else's comments.
Where I want to start.
Yeah, well, tie it together to this amendment.
So we have, we have already addressed the addition, our current pension obligations, and we have before us in the near future over $100 million in infrastructure investments. So it's not an either-or here. And then, secondly, Councilmember Vice Mayor Niss had spoken about the points I had made at the recent Finance Committee meeting of concerns that we are having a proposal, not that we have adopted, in addition to 17 staff positions in a single budget year, but we can't seem to afford restoring a fraction of the funding that had been cut previously from our His Rap, adjusted for inflation. And so for those reasons, I'll be supporting the original motion rather than the amendment.
Councilmember Scharf.
So I'm fascinated by this discussion, actually. I, I think it's fascinating that two members of the Finance Committee are thinking this through again, and I applaud them for that, frankly. I think it's, it's an important thing to do. I did have a concern that this seems out of the normal way we do this on the process, a lot of the ways Councilmember Klein mentioned. So I also will be supporting the amendment.
Okay. I think one of the concerns that I'm having here with, with what's, what's in front of me right now is that we still haven't gotten to the second half of the original motion. So of the original motion for Finance Committee, I will be supporting this amendment because I think it is more measured. I have been a huge champion of trying to get as much funds over to His Rap as possible throughout the years. I think everybody has heard me speak to that. I do believe that this particular process of having a number come out of a dialogue without having some stickiness to a process is concerning me. I think that it should have been routine to have passed the original motion, so I would like to see if the maker and seconder would also include the original item number one and item number two to go ahead and fund the second half of the grants on this amendment as well as, let's see, authorize and execute the two-year contracts for the 14 agencies.
I mean, essentially as minimums, you're saying, and anything additional will be determined?
In addition to this, so that we actually can execute these...
I'd be open, but the amendment's on the floor, not the original motion, so...
So this would be an amendment to the motion, and so amending this even further is not something that...
So the maker of the amendment can adopt what you proposed.
Right, that's what I'm looking to.
Oh, you, that's, I don't think that's what you said.
So I, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Niss, would you be able to accept, so it's item number one and item number two, not item number three, because that has the, the money for Avenidas and PAC in there, which is now separated out. Do we need to have that in? The original motion for Finance Committee, it's on packet page 180. The actual action to approve the second half of these grants were never made in the Finance Committee, so I wanted to get that going ahead.
We can come back to the financing.
Or we can come back to them. Let's come back to them, okay. All right, in that case, as much as I would like to have a real rigorous conversation about the entire His Rap package, which I think we're going to have to have next year already because we have changed two of the large allocations to His Rap, I would like to support this as a measured way to go ahead and see if there is any tidy up we can do with current grant applications in such a way that could be orderly and not so expansive that we end up with a whole new allocation process, which I know we cannot do. So this, I think, is a little, is more measured, so I appreciate the change. Councilmember Price, did you want to speak to this amendment?
Yes, thank you. I will not be supporting the amendment. I feel that we have, we and previous councils have discussed the His Rap process, the funding, the changing economics, the circumstances of individuals in our communities. I feel quite strongly that actually Palo Alto, we are more than 1% and 2% than we are the rest of the population, and I think we have a social responsibility to be more generous. I also recognize that we need a more thoughtful discussion of His Rap funding, and I agree with many colleagues saying that that should come back in the future when we talk about other serious ways to look at it more critically. I recognize we have infrastructure issues, we have pension issues, but we have human needs and human services issues. And a city like the city of Palo Alto should look at this very seriously. The HRC does, the staff does, and community-based organizations work very hard with very limited funding. The $200,000, of course, will not, you know, make everything work beautifully, but we have the resources now, and I think we should allocate, I am talking to the main motion. So I will not be supporting the amendment. I do not think at this moment in time it's appropriate to be so specific and constrained. I do believe we do need a future discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, speaking to the amendment, I also will not be supporting it. And respectfully, while I do recognize and understand that Councilmember Berman has identified a rationale, I think also the original motion has a rationale to it. And I find this conversation frustrating in so many different ways because, for a variety of different reasons. I would say some of us find it frustrating in different, different ways, different reasons. But this dollar amount of $31,620, it's, you know, look at our consent calendars. We approve six and sometimes even seven-figure dollar amounts with reading a staff report and not even questioning them in a, in a public dialogue. These are organizations and individuals who do exist in our community, come through our community, and who, quite frankly, if not properly funded, whether it's through the city, through the county, or whatever means nonprofits go to for their funding, can actually cost the city money. And, you know, there are things I want to say that I won't, but I, I find this very frustrating, and I will say it, it's almost embarrassing. I will say that, that we are haggling over, you know, $170,000 when we approve larger dollar amounts on consent calendar regularly. So I will be supporting the original motion.
Okay, I see no more lights. Let's go ahead and vote on the amendment. And the amendment passes with Councilmember Holman, Burt, Price, and Schmidt voting no. So the amendment, we have amended it to reduce that amount, and I was trying to make a motion to adopt, which I guess I'll go back to the original...
Can we just do the original motion first? You still got a motion now with an amendment to add.
Okay.
You need to vote on the motion.
I know, to amend the motion to include the original recommendation was, which is to go ahead and fund the second half of the His Rap grants that Finance Committee was taking up. I was hoping to get that as an amendment. I'm now being counseled that we could just take it up after we vote on this.
Oh, yes, council amendment, I think it should now be accepted.
Okay, so, and the one part, point of clarity I had was whether or not we needed to do item three. The city manager is, does need to author, to be authorized to execute five of separate six-year contracts with Avenidas and Palo Alto Community Child Care. So I wanted to know from staff whether or not that was still required. Item number three on the original Finance Committee recommendation regarding Avenidas and PAC, do you still need that amendment? Are they still part of the 2015 allocation for His Rap? Or have they been separated after?
Point of information, Madam Mayor, as I read this, this is not the Finance Committee recommendations, it's the staff recommendations you're referring to.
Right.
That's why I wanted to keep it separate.
But that's a real, that's a real difference, though.
So do you think we should take this up separately from this here?
Well, I'm, I think it's non-controversial, so probably doesn't make any difference. But that's the language we use when we incorporate everything into the budget, so those will come before us as a regular part of the budget process.
This actually was what was being taken up that evening so that it could go into the budget process.
Yes.
But it, they're in the budget process already, the way I understand this. And so this needs to get put into the budget process unless we don't need to take these recommendations up.
Walter Rossman, Budget Director, the actual base allocation for all 14 agencies plus Avenidas and PAC is included in the budget, so that's before the Finance Committee today. So if any additional funding, which we discussed today as a council, is extra $31,000, which we already referred now to the Finance Committee, so on the base funding, we should be okay. We are okay. Does that make sense?
Well, it, it doesn't make sense as to why this got taken up then, I guess, so, okay, I will accept that. So we do not need to make this as an amendment. So the motion stands with the amendment, and I see no more lights, so I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote on the, on the amended motion. And the motion carries with Councilmember Price voting no. That concludes item number eight on our agenda, and we will move now to item...
May I ask for a clarification as well, as far as timing, as to when the council would like to see the recommendations for the $31,000? Did you want to see that as part of the, the budget hearing process, or just sometime in next fiscal year, if I can get some feedback on how soon you'd like to see this back?
Jim, do you have any ideas to how you should handle this? Do you have some concept?
Well, no, I, I think actually we have the CSD budget even, what, tomorrow night before finance, so I mean, I think there are always opportunities. You may hear from the public and even during the Finance Committee process, and then ultimately, when you potentially adopt a final budget, you may have more information.
So it will go through the regular Finance Committee process?
Well, I mean, you may, you may...
With the budget?
Yeah, you may, you may hear some comments, but I mean, in, in many ways, well, I'll have to think about that. Why don't we sort of hear, see?
Yeah, I think it would be better if you could work with the city manager on how to bring this back to council.
Yeah.
So is there anything more? Did you have something, Councilmember Scharf?
I do. I noticed that Mr. Gardino is in the audience, and I didn't really want to subject him to an hour-long discussion, mind-numbing changes in proposed, changes in development fees. And so I thought maybe what we could do is take that item up before we take up item number 10. I'd like to make a motion that we take that up first. Yeah, for nine, for nine and 10.
All right, why don't we go ahead and vote?
Could we hear the, what was the motion?
The motion was to move up item number, is it...
Nine and 10, right, move up item number 11.
Move up item number 11 now, which is, and then go back to item number nine and item number 10. Do we have, this means that staff might need to...
So the only, the only question I would raise is I'm imagining that item 11 is going to take some time and a UUT, and I just wonder if, rather than me keeping some staff around here on the development impact fee, that I just carry that forward to a, a future meeting? It's not time-sensitive and urgent, and I just think that that, that would be worthwhile. I don't think you would have an objection to that. Okay?
Okay, why don't we go ahead and do that? And so we'll only take up the utility user tax after this. So from now on, it's tax. And, okay, so, just, oh, yes, let's go ahead and vote to reorder the agenda. And that motion carries. So is Richard here? Hang on just a second. We're bringing Richard down? Okay. Do you want to take just a five-minute break while we get Richard down?
Sure.
Yeah, so we will be taking this item up. Break between now and the next council meeting. And the sales tax initiative by Silicon Valley Leadership Group is fast-moving forward with language right now, and we wanted to get this under consideration for City Council. So I think I've already announced the fact that we did re-notice the Policy and Services Committee for tomorrow night in the event that we want to give them direction to take this up more substantively or granularly, to actually come up with a position or not, or better advice, since they do take up the legislative work for the council. Richard, I think you have a presentation. We also have Carl Gardino here, and we also have Mark Simon, who is not ready to present, but here to answer any questions regarding Caltrain, if necessary. So I'm going to go ahead and take it, have Richard take off, take it over with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd, and council members. I'll keep my remarks brief, in order to allow for questions and comments by council afterwards. But briefly, just wanted to reiterate that the goal tonight is to provide a brief overview for you on the proposed Santa Clara County Transportation Tax Initiative. It is not the expectation of staff that council will make detailed recommendations tonight as to what specific project should be funded, but instead develop a general direction, provide your general direction to staff as to what policymaking process should be undertaken to eventually answer all of those questions. So in attendance tonight is Carl Gardino, CEO of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, who's been immensely involved in this process. He has a presentation that he would like to give to you tonight, a brief presentation, I believe, about 10 minutes. And included in the summary that was presented for you in the council packet was some of the preliminary polling data, which should create a little bit of context for you as well as to what projects seem favorable at this point. So at this time, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and staff. It's really a pleasure to be back in Palo Alto. I promise you, I expended lots of sales tax dollars before I walked over to the council meeting tonight as well. It's a pleasure to be back here. As you know, my name's Carl Gardino. I'm president and CEO of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. I'm also chair of the California Transportation Commission, on which I've served for the past seven years. But I want to make it clear, I'm here tonight in my hat as CEO of the Leadership Group. I want to thank staff and Mayor Shepherd again, too, for saying yes to my request to present to you tonight, so that we could have a thorough dialogue about the transportation challenges here in Santa Clara County, and ways in which we hope to, once again, help address those challenges. To provide a little bit of context, as you know, over the last 30 years, since 1984, the Silicon Valley Leadership Group has had the pleasure of leading and co-leading five successful ballot measures for transportation funding improvements here in Santa Clara County. That started in 1984, when we partnered with then-county supervisor Zoe Lofgren for the original Measure A, the first half-cent sales tax for specific transportation improvements passed in any of California's 58 counties. We were able to deliver all of those improvements on time and on budget, building Highway 85, vastly improving Highway 237, as well as Highway 101. In 1992, we went back to the ballot with a measure that I had the pleasure of leading for the Leadership Group, that would have been a 20-year measure. It passed at the polls, but changes in the interpretation of Proposition 13 meant that the State Supreme Court in September of 1995 overturned that ballot success and said all local measures then required a two-thirds vote for specific improvements. That put us right back to work to place on the measure, to place on the ballot a measure in November of 1996, which passed and delivered 18 specific improvements on time and on budget or under budget. That expired, however, in 2006, and we were then feeling the pinch in our last big boom in 1999 and 2000, so we went back to the ballot in the year 2000 with a 100% transit-only measure, 30 years, to run when the 1996 measure sunsetted in 2006. So that tax didn't even start until six years later in 2006. That will run through 2036 and will generate its estimated today in the $6.5 billion to $7 billion range, just in local taxes. And then in 2008, we ran a fifth-successful measure, an eighth-of-a-cent sales tax that will also run for 30 years, from, again, passed in 2008, and will run until 2038. That brings us to today. Traffic is back. Our economy is strong, and it's better to have traffic because we have a great economy than no traffic because our economy has gone back into recession. But it has made all of us feel the pinch, as we hear from our own constituencies, about what are we going to do about it? The fact of the matter is, the federal government's Highway Trust Fund is expected to go bankrupt in August of this year. The state of transportation, the state of transportation funding in the state of California, our 10-year needs assessment through the California Transportation Commission shows a $298 billion funding gap in the state highway systems, not to mention local street and road and local transit improvements over the next 10 years alone. Once again, that means, do we pull ourselves up by our own bootstraps and try to find solutions? Let me pivot, then, to the Silicon Valley Leadership Group and our process. Many of you know, we operate with a rolling, three-year business plan. Our member company executives came together in mid-December for our annual shareholders' meeting, about 220 of our executives, and they approved, in that rolling, three-year business plan, the potential for, once again, leading another transportation funding measure for Santa Clara County. We will be candid with you on all of these matters, but the first moment of candor is this: We'd always been thinking, November of 2016, we tend to like presidential general elections when we do these campaigns. The turnout is higher, and it's about a 2 to 5 percentage point difference in the polls. Yet that was our decision, three-year plan in December. In January, as we have done with all of our successful measures, we started pulling together the broader community. We do that in many ways. One of the most successful ways, when we're talking about good, sound transportation policy, is to pull together the professionals. And so as we have done with all of these measures, we asked all the regional transportation agency leads, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, Caltrans, Caltrain, Amtrak, Altamont Commuter Express, et cetera, to form a working group to advise us on the regional portions of what any smart, thoughtful expenditure plan might have as components. We also do the same with the 15 cities and towns and the county's public works directors and transportation directors. Since about 87% of all of our commute trips start and end in Santa Clara County, that is really the key group. We have two other working groups, one of the broader community of stakeholders, and then our own transportation professionals, our TDM managers within our companies. We reached out to them in January, they've kindly been meeting since that time, and this week and next week are the third and fourth meetings of each of those four working In April of each year, we do an annual public policy survey. We use the same pollster that we've used for the last 25 years, and the same pollster who's led with us all of these transportation funding campaigns. We were able to take the product of those four working groups, primarily the two working groups of transportation professionals, and use those in our survey of 600 registered voters to find out if what they believe as professionals is good policy for transportation solutions in our county, in a democracy also meets what voters would be willing to invest their hard-earned tax dollars to support. With that, we did that survey in April. Now, you know from my letters to each of you, both hard copy and soft copy, first the first week of February, and then the second week of April, that I've been personally reaching out to each of you on this council, and all the councils in Santa Clara County, to meet with you. And you, many of you graciously have had the time to respond to those four requests for meetings since the first week of February, and we've had some wonderful meetings. For those of you with whom I have not yet had the pleasure of meeting one-on-one, I think most of us are looking for times right now, including as early as this Friday, and I'm looking forward to those meetings as well. The survey. We asked three questions that we wanted to be as transparent as possible, so we let you know about it in the letter. We also communicated with the public as best we could through the Mercury News, the Business Journal, and we posted it on our website as well. What we found was, when you leave transportation decisions or ideas up to transportation professionals, as usual, your staff and the other staffs nailed it. They had six categories, three roads, three transit, that they felt would go a long way in a revenue-constrained environment to help provide transportation improvements and traffic relief. All six of the categories of funding that they advised us to consider in any new funding measure, all six as individual parts, had more than two-thirds support in the polling. That really speaks well of the transportation professionals in this county. All we do is facilitate those discussions. The three areas for road improvements were street maintenance and pothole repair in all 15 cities and towns. We always respect the freedom of those professionals to speak, but I will say it was a North County city representative who said, yes, but if we're already doing really well in our pavement condition index, are we going to be penalized in that area if we're already there? Lot of wisdom there. We said, no. If you're a city that's above a certain percent in your pavement condition index, then you have flexibility on how you use those funds. Second category, improvements in the, on the. Second category, improvements in the expressway system. We have eight county expressways. They're really the backbone of the car commute in this county, and we're blessed that the county and all the cities have just finished a multi-year plan on the expressway network. So we have fresh data. The third is one that we can highly leverage and is one that's personal to me when we think especially of our kids, but that's bicycle and pedestrian improvements, especially near schools. On the transit side, three major components. None of them will surprise you. First, finish what we started with the second segment of the BART extension into downtown San Jose and on to Santa Clara. Second, no surprise here either from my past work on this topic, Caltrain commuter rail improvements in the Santa Clara County portion of that 79-mile system that runs from Gilroy to San Francisco. And then, third, one with always a high return on the investment, transit improvements for senior citizens, the poor, and the disabled. Those are the six component parts. The next step is relying on good economists to determine if it's only a quarter cent, so that we don't eat up all the sales tax increment for cities or towns or the county or anyone else who may think of needs in the future that they might have, then how much can we have in such a fiscally constrained environment? So we tested only a quarter cent when the need is much greater for a 30-year life, as we did with the 2000 and 2008 measures. That would raise, we're told, conservative estimate about $3.2 billion, or a less conservative estimate, but still realistic, $3.75 billion. We tried to stay in about the middle when we've done these in the past, because we find if you actually deliver what you promise to our fellow private citizens and taxpayers, they trust you when you come back. With that, we also tested, as we all see when we go to the ballot, what is a 75-word ballot question that captures all that? We tested the ballot question around those six component parts. We had support of 73% yes, only 23% no, and 4% undecided. In Santa Clara County, everybody has an opinion. Very few were undecided. The pollster we've worked with, Jim Moore out of Moore Methods for 25 years, called me the next day, because in five successful campaigns, we have never polled this high, ever, on a transportation funding measure. And he said, "Carl, I know you've been thinking about November of 2016. You really ought to at least consider accelerating that pace." Why? We're pretty confident what the economy will look like absent a major disaster or a global issue this November. We really have no idea what the economy will look like two and a half years from now. Second, there are very few tax or fee measures on the ballot this November. It's not a crowded ballot, because we're not the only ones who have figured out that presidential general election years are the best time for a tax or a fee measure. You have your transient occupancy tax that I believe you're considering for November, usually paid for by people from out of town, so not as much of an impact. The city of Gilroy, all the way to the south county, is thinking about either a bond or a sales tax for general purposes, as the city of Campbell did in 2008 when we were also on the ballot. They both passed by two-thirds, by the way. Other than that, we haven't heard of any other cities who are looking with great viability for a tax measure on this November's ballot. So it seems like a pretty clean ballot should we collectively decide to go forward. Well, what is our process from here? The Leadership Group Board of Directors meets in mid-June. I am not going to go to them and recommend a $2 million campaign based on three questions in one question set in one poll. We are going out to poll again later this week, 800 sample size, for about eight nights, and we will know by early June whether or not the climate is right by our fellow voters and taxpayers. Then we will continue this process. Again, with my hard and soft copy letters to each of you personalized in first week of February and again in the second week of April, meeting with the Cities Association in early March and going back there in June, and several councils like you have been very gracious to let me come and speak in an open forum as well. We'll continue that with another council tomorrow afternoon. We'll continue that process. But we want to continue to hear from you, as we have from the professionals, who we've always entrusted in guiding and informing us with these measures of what is the best way that we can mutually proceed. Now, I know that Caltrain is a priority for you, as it is for me, and I will just give some background on these measures relative to Caltrain. In our 1996 measure, as you know, Caltrain was a top priority, and we were able to see station and service improvements here in Palo Alto and throughout the portion of that 79-mile line that is in Santa Clara County through that measure. In the year 2000 measure, we've already seen $80 million for the Santa Clara County share of electrification of the Caltrain line. And wearing my CTC hat, two years ago, I led the effort with my commission colleagues for $105 million in very rare state funds for the electrification of the Caltrain line as well. So we want to continue with a measure, should we decide collectively to move forward, that is smart in terms of transit improvements, as well as balanced road improvements. The time to build whole-new freeways probably ended with our 1984 measure, bless you, but we can still do smart improvements along our system throughout Santa Clara County to benefit all 2 million folks who call this beautiful valley home. You've been very gracious with your time. I would love to learn from you and answer any questions that you might have to the best of my ability as well. And again, thank you for those of you who have already met with me, some as many as three times since February, and others who have responded to those letters of outreach and that we are meeting very soon. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Mayor.
I know, Mark, you weren't prepared to make any comments if you'd like to. That's fine. I see people are starting to dribble in now. We were expected to take this up at about 9:30, so we've got, I want to make sure that we can be patient with the oral communication on this. So I'd like to go out to colleagues and then break at 9:30 to let others come forward, and then we can do a break and do public comment at 9:30, if you don't mind. It'll be a little choppy, but we'll just take it in between council members. Vice Mayor Ness, you have your light on.
Let me start by thanking Carl Gordino for coming up tonight. We've worked together a lot on a number of different issues, and I applaud his diligence as well as his integrity, but diligence for sure. I also wanted to mention his chair of the MTC, chair of the CTC, excuse me. That's such a major position in this state that I want to call that out, because being chair of that, which is the California Transportation Commission, controls a great deal of funding. And that 105 that you put toward electrification made a big difference. And I think that's probably the area that we are dwelling on as much as anything, is how do we make sure that we get to that? It has a number of jumps in it that could be somewhat difficult. I know that one of the things that certainly will be mentioned tonight is grade separations, which are extraordinarily expensive, but it would probably help us to have some idea of what you see as a percent of this that could possibly be set aside for Caltrain, how and when.
Thank you for your kind words, Vice Mayor Ness. And you're right about the California Transportation Commission. While we are woefully underfunded for transportation improvements in California, we do program and allocate about $5 billion a year for transportation improvements. And while that may sound like a lot of money when you look at the need, again, a 10-year shortfall just on the state part of our transportation systems of $298 billion over the next 10 years, you get a sense of the magnitude of the need as opposed to the supply of funds for it. In terms of Caltrain commuter rail improvements, my hope, my goal, is that if this measure were to go forward, that a fifth of all the funds, 20% of all the funds collected, would be for Caltrain commuter rail improvements. And again, I'm one person standing before you who's been facilitating for the past four months and not giving personal opinions, but my sense from the people that we have been depending on as professionals is a very high number, because while we've done some good work for Caltrain in our 1996 measure, in our 2000 measure as well, and through my role on the CTC, there's a huge need. Could we do more? Absolutely, in every category. But we made the decision, from a leadership group perspective, to only seek a quarter of a cent, knowing that there are so many other needs in this county and its 15 cities and towns, that we didn't want to risk taking up too much of the increment of sales tax funds that can be sought. As you know, we're currently at 8.75. The cap in the state is 9.5, and this would still leave a full half percent for other needs should they be identified and passed with voter support.
When would you realistically see the time in the future when Caltrain and BART would meet up in Santa Clara?
While it's not soon enough. As we all know, Caltrain's been running since 1863 in the Abraham Lincoln administration. It now carries about 53 daily passenger trips. It has a 60% Fairbox return. It's a wonderful system. BART, which was first dreamed up in the early 1950s and was supposed to go around the bay completely, now carries more than 400,000 daily passenger trips on a 104-mile system and has close to a 75% Fairbox return. And these two great systems should meet up, and they will. The first segment of our BART extension from the capital measure that many of us worked on together, including you, Vice Mayor Ness, in 2000, is extending BART the first 10 miles from the Future Warm Spring Station, which will be completed in 2015, down to Milpitas and Barriessa. That's the first 10 miles. As you know, it's running $100 million under budget, a full year ahead of schedule. The final 6.1 miles, I believe, can be done by about 2023. Less optimistic people think 2025. That brings it to the Deirdre Don Station in downtown San Jose, where it links up with several other systems, including Caltrain commuter rail service, and then goes on to Santa Clara, where you also have the yard that is needed for Caltrain and the direct platform-to-platform link once again with Caltrain and the people mover to all three passenger terminals at San Jose International Airport. So we will finally have rapid rail around the entire bay, even if it wasn't what was envisioned in the mid-1950s, about one system around the bay.
Thanks. I think that's one of the most important things for all of us, is thinking of a ring of rail or BART or whatever we may think of it being as finally existing. So thanks, and thanks for coming.
It's my pleasure. But key safety and speed improvements on Caltrain is essential, we believe, to any future measure and to the future of this region.
And I go out to one more colleague and then go out for public comment. Councilmember Burt.
Thanks for coming, Carl.
My pleasure. Good to see you.
We've had discussions around this topic a few times. You nailed it in that Caltrain is our top priority here. You said about 20% of the dollars you were hoping would go toward Caltrain, and that's 20% of approximately how many dollars?
Thank you. Forgive me if I hadn't been more clear. The economists with whom we have worked in the past estimates that a quarter cent over 30 years would generate between $3.2 billion and $3.75 billion. We like to stay on the conservative side. We usually say about half of that, so if it were a $3.5 billion measure, forgive me, about at least a seventh, at least a seventh. I said a fifth. I meant at least a seventh.
And about how much would go to BART?
To finish the BART system, and we'll try to give you any numbers that you'd like, to finish the second segment of the BART system, the local share is short 1.3, not dollars, billion.
Right. And in the last transportation measure, how did those numbers break down and how much went to BART and how much went to Caltrain?
Sure. You're probably referring to the 2000 measure, which was the last capital measure. And again, that started collecting the tax in '06 and runs through 2036. That's expected to generate between $6.5 and $7 billion in revenue, about. Because the first segment and the second segment were broken up by VTA policy decision, which is certainly their right. It's probably half of that measure will be BART capital. We had designed that measure to also have operating funds. The history on that, in 2005, the Valley Transportation Authority had to make a tough policy decision. They had been cutting bus lines a lot, that a lot of the very poorest of the poor in our valley depend upon. As a business community, we were sensitive to that, so we joined with others in urging the VTA board to shift what was about 18, 18.5% of all the funds that would be generated to that, primarily for bus operations. That's one of the main reasons we had to go back out in 2008 for an eighth of a cent solely for the operations and maintenance of that BART extension. So capital construction-wise, from the first measure for doing the whole first segment with the help of state and federal funds, but the local share, plus what they've set aside for the second segment, again, it's about half. The thing that I like to remind people, though, as somebody who is a big proponent of all forms of transit, is that we would have none of that money if it weren't for BART, because as the person who's led the '92, '96, 2000, and 2008 campaigns, it won solely because it included BART.
And how much toward Caltrain from that measure?
Oh, my goodness. I'll have to go back and check. It called for projects more than a dollar amount, just as it called for the BART extension and not a dollar amount. So I'm going, I'm going back based on what was actually spent already for that first segment that's running 100 million under schedule and a year, a year ahead of schedule and 100 million under budget. I can go to those numbers because they've actually been invested.
It wasn't much, right, on that measure, I don't think?
It wasn't as much as I'd like to, I'm speaking as a human, as just a person now. It's not as much as I hope we would collectively invest in a new measure.
And we have the, I saw statistics on the new Deirdre Don Station plan, which is pretty comprehensive, and it looks at all the connector needs to the Deirdre Don Station, and I can't remember the horizon date, but I think it projected 10,000 BART boardings per day and 10,000 Caltrain boardings per day, which is really fascinating if that's correct. And it kind of goes to this increasing recognition, not just up here in the north end of the valley, but really throughout all of Silicon Valley, of how important Caltrain is as the transit backbone of Silicon Valley. And as important as BART is, I think an objective analysis, not just a parochial analysis, would say, for Silicon Valley, Caltrain is more important than BART, and its capital needs are less. That doesn't mean we shouldn't fund both. And I say that because, kind of, the basis for a dialogue around what portion of this funding should go toward Caltrain needs that would address some very significant long-term capacity constraints, because Caltrain is having this organic growth that we're seeing about 10% per year. Because Caltrain is having this organic growth that we're seeing about 10% per year. We're going to have electrification that's going to have a step growth in demand for the system and capacity. When we get the downtown subway, we're going to have another step increase in demand. And we don't have the capacity in trains on the horizon, partly because of what's set aside for high-speed rail, and we need to figure out other ways to increase the capacity. We also will run up against capacity constraints at grade crossings. And you mentioned the grade separations being vital. We're also going to need, frankly, longer platforms to accommodate longer trains because we can't fit longer trains.
That's right.
So I would hope, and I'll be interested in what my colleagues have to say on this, that the proportion of this fund that goes to Caltrain be, I guess, I don't hold out hope that would be equal to the demand in ridership in proportion to BART. I don't see that happening. But I would, I would hope that it would, that equation would be a major part of the discourse on what proportion there should be. And the other thing that I'd point out is that, I recall, and you're entirely right that back in the prior measures, that BART is what carried the ballot measure. Your polling this time, though, shows a real distinct shift in the public perception, and that Caltrain support is exceeding BART support. And that's, that's great to hear. I think it reflects the reality of the need. And I think politically, it also is something that is quite a change, and that hopefully it will be part of the consideration in the funding proportions that go on when we, when we look at how to break this up. So those are my questions and comments, and I hope to hear from my colleagues on some of these things, and that they'll be part of the consideration going forward.
Pat, thank you for your thoughtful remarks. Let me quickly respond overwhelmingly to agree with you. I've never quite understood, as someone who is a transportation professional, and you're not doing this either, but in some minds where it's almost a one system versus a different system. These two systems coming together, candidly, humbly, primarily because of the work of the leadership group over these measures over the last 30 years, is what will serve our whole region. We'll finally have rapid rail around the bay with platform-to-platform transfers. That is our goal and vision. I know that's your goal and vision. So we need to get over one system over another. Now, in finite resources, how do you improve both? By the numbers, again, Caltrain, which I'm a huge supporter of, and obviously our measures and my role in the CTC put my wallet where my words are a lot on these. Caltrain, 79 miles, cover, carries 53,000 weekday passenger trips, fare box return of 60%, phenomenally successful. BART, not that many more miles, 104 miles as opposed to 79, 400,000 daily passenger trips, fare box return between 70 and 75%. They both have tremendous ridership. The 16.1 mile extension of BART into Milpitas, San Jose, and Santa Clara, according to the FTA, when they granted $900 million in the full funding grant agreement that we sought and asked us come forward for Segment 2 for more, and they said that publicly as well as privately, and again, as recently as a month ago in Washington, DC, say that their modeling is that 16.1 mile extension alone, 90,000 additional weekday passenger trips, just from a 16.1 mile extension. So let's know, these are phenomenally good systems that we're going to bring together.
And, and I fully agree with what a strong system BART is. The other part to that calculus needs to be the capital dollars expended per mile. And in that sense, Caltrain is a more efficient system, even with the future investments that we'll have. As I agree with you, it's not an either-or equation.
Good.
And, and I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm suggesting that we look at each system in terms of the importance of the ridership increase and the real problem on our horizon about being able to get a place on a Caltrain train. And that's, I believe, has been under-recognized, that we're heading into a blind tunnel unless we address that issue. And our whole system, particularly on the peninsula, is going to break down if we don't have adequate capacity for Caltrain.
And I would, I would not only second your motion, but I would raise you. You think it's tough to get a seat on Caltrain? Try to get a seat on Caltrain with your bike, and it's even more challenging. So why do we want to electrify? First, safety. Second, speed. Third, that means more headways. Fourth, it reduces greenhouse gas emissions. And fifth, it handles noise issues as well. That's why we've been such strong proponents of, as we do improvements, not limited solely to electrification with funds, but with electrification being a key component of those improvements because it has those five very tangible, important benefits. The third thing about the, about the polling, you know, it's been, for the leadership group, I've now run 12 initiative campaigns, 11 successfully, five for transportation funding measures in this county. When you have six component parts and they're all polling above 2/3, forgive me, I just don't quibble if one had a couple of extra points. We had 88% supporting bike ped improvements, especially near schools. But that won't be, you know, that won't be a billion and a half as much as as a cyclist and, and someone who commutes by bike almost every day, some days I wish it would be half the funds. But we don't allocate portions based on how well something polled. We look to the professionals of what can we do in a fiscally constrained environment that is the best for each system and brings the best of those systems working together. We can never do everything we can, but we do as much as we can.
Thank you, Carl.
No, it's my pleasure.
I'm going to go out to the public. Are you finished?
Yeah.
So I'm going to go out to the public.
Pat, thank you. I look forward to our meeting very soon. May I sit and then come back then?
Yes, yes. Typically, when, if there's a question that somebody has, sometimes people just like to make comments as well.
Sure.
But the public will be speaking uninterrupted for three minutes each, so, and I have a few, just a few people that would like to speak. Stephen Rosenblum is our first one, and then Adina Levin. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm here again to speak about Caltrain. I'm sorry I missed the beginning of Mr. Guardino's talk, but the council was running ahead of schedule, and that's quite unusual.
Yes.
I'm sure you all appreciate that. Anyway, I would like to put my two cents in, again, for grade separation in Caltrain. As has been pointed out by members of the council already, Caltrain is extremely important to the peninsula. In fact, to me and my friends, it's much more important than BART because we don't really have access to BART very easily from here. If I go to San Francisco for downtown, I go on Caltrain. And if I want to go to the East Bay, I drive, or else I go to Union City in my car and then take BART from there. The connection to Oakland, for example, is pretty bad on BART from here. So I think what we need to do is compare the Caltrain to BART. And what's the difference? BART has grade separation, Caltrain does not. Caltrain was built as a freight railroad in 1863, and it still runs essentially the same way as it did then. And even if we get electrification, all we're promised is one, is five more trains in the rush hour in each direction. So that's really not much of an improvement in service, even though the trains will be able to stop and start faster, we're still limited by gate downtime, and we still have to get the cars across the tracks. So in order to make Caltrain a mass transit system of the future and to have high-speed rail eventually, we need to have grade separation, and I think we, we need to be sure that this money goes toward that aim. And I think if it does, you'll certainly have my support in trying to get this bond measure passed. If it doesn't, I think we're, we're not really thinking about, you know, even 10 years down the road, much less, you know, 50 years or 100 years, which this system is going to be around for. And I think our children and grandchildren will thank us for our foresight if we, if we have grade separation, and they will complain about our lack of foresight if we don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Adina Levin to be followed by Roland Lebron.
Good evening, councilmembers. Adina Levin with Friends of Caltrain, as you know, a nonprofit organization with over 3,000 participants on the Caltrain corridor between San Francisco and San Jose, and probably a couple in Gilroy and Morgan Hill as well. And, you know, glad to hear the discussion of the proposed ballot measure from Mr. Guardino and the leadership group, which is looking to bring money in for the BART and Caltrain projects. Looking forward to these systems connecting up in Deirdre Don. Tomorrow night, the San Jose City Council is going to be reviewing for approval the Deirdre Don specific plan to really develop that area into a more transit-rich, bikeable, walkable urban area connected to downtown, and the connecting of Caltrain and BART is essential to that and a big part of the future of this region. That said, the thing that I keep hearing from people in the Friends of Caltrain community, you know, people who are here back for the 2000 ballot measure, is they're quite concerned that they voted for, among other things, Caltrain electrification, and that money was utilized for other purposes. And people who use transit, support it strongly, and want to be able to support ballot measures to fund transit, also have a high level of anxiety that what they will vote for will be what the money is spent on, and therefore will look for language that will help ensure that that does, in fact, happen. Another thing in terms of what the money for Caltrain will be spent on, Councilmember Burt talked about the capacity constraints. Caltrain train holds about 650 people, except for the most crowded ones are holding about 850. It's very uncomfortable, and that's starting to put, you know, limitations on how this can serve economic growth going forward. So in terms of priorities, we want to see the Caltrain capacity expansion, you know, including longer trains, be a very high priority. Grade separations are important, but if we don't, aren't able to carry the more people that the riders depend on, the system is going to come to a halt. So Santa Clara County should be able to pay Caltrain's bills and then fund the increase in capacity and, you know, and then get started on the grade separations that would be needed to support increased frequency, which would be needed over time as well. So, and by the way, one of the things that was polled on was extension through South County towards Gilroy. There are a lot of people who can use the train south of Deirdre Don, but if they can't fit on the train, we won't be doing them any favors.
Thank you. Roland Lebron to be followed by Arthur Keller.
Good evening, Mayor Sheppert, and members of the council. Thank you for your leadership and starting this conversation. The first thing I'd like to touch on, as Councilmember Burt said, is that Caltrain to Gilroy scored higher than the BART extension. As a matter of fact, the BART extension at 67%, if it went on its own on the ballot, would have a 50% chance of failing. Now, the main reason for this is that BART will not do anything for the 600,000 people who live south of Highway 280 and currently get the same non-existent Caltrain service as Gilroy. This is the reason why there is a parking crisis at Tamian, including my car, which is parked there right now, even though I live two miles away from the Blossom Hill Caltrain station. Moving to the real reason why I took Caltrain to Palo Alto this evening is that I would like the city council to consider requesting more specificity in any new transportation sales tax measure. As an example, the $40 million of Measure A funds in Marford-Dumbarton Rail are currently unaccounted for. And the VTA have just reallocated the $22.8 million in Caltrain South County capacity, which is basically the service to Gilroy, to a light rail project in Mountain View, you know, to support the 49ers. So in closing, my recommendation moving forward would be to ensure that any future Santa Clara County transportation tax measure clearly identify funding requirements for specific projects, including expected sales tax revenue for each project. And last but not least, there should be legally, there should be legally enforceable guidelines for the reallocation of funds between projects. And I would suggest that the legal language in San Francisco 2003 Prop 8 is a very, very good place to start. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Arthur Keller to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Thank you. Although I serve on Palo Alto's Planning and Transportation Commission, these comments are my own and not in any official capacity. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. BART was built in the 60s. Santa Clara County had the opportunity to join BART. Instead, decided to spend its sales tax money on building expressways. Not that there's anything wrong with expressways, but it decided, didn't want to grow along a linear corridor. It decided to grow longer and wider. In the 2000 Measure A campaign, we were promised, along with BART, to Silicon Valley. In fact, it basically said in the material that we would get BART, connect BART to Milpitas, San Jose, and Santa Clara, among other things, and then say, expand, electrify, Caltrain. And I don't see any money having gone for expanding and electrifying Caltrain. And obviously, there was not enough money for Milpitas, San Jose, and Santa Clara. And then we came back on Measure B, asking for more money to go for paying for BART operations and improvements and maintenance because of a shortage of money. So I'm sort of wondering how much more money will go to BART. We know that, I think BART is a worthy project, but it is not serving the needs of all the county. In particular, the statistics that were mentioned earlier about Caltrain include Caltrain all the way to Gilroy, when a large section of that has a very few trains running between San Jose and Gilroy, and therefore, if you consider the ridership, you should really consider between San Francisco and San Jose, not all the way to Gilroy when you consider, you know, in terms of trains and passengers. So I would suggest that firstly, the money be returned to Dumbarton Rail, which will serve the mid-peninsula, both Southern San Mateo County and Northern Santa Clara County, that there be funding for grade separations, which are sorely needed in order to increase service dramatically. I went to talk with some other people with, where Mayor Ed Lee said he wants to invest in Caltrain. In particular, he's, they're funding Caltrain going up to the south, the Transbay Terminal. That's going to increase ridership demand into San Francisco, and I think that we should have a cap on the amount of money that is spent on the, this proposed measure for the funds for VTA to BART, and then allow that. And one final thing is that if, is that part of this plan, I understand, involves putting a lot of BART that goes to San Jose and into Santa Clara entirely, mostly underground, over four miles underground. Now, most other parts where BART is built, in Oakland and places like that, East Bay, it's all, only underground in downtown areas. Even San Francisco, it's not underground in all of San Jose, San Francisco. And so I think that we should basically make sure that if, you know, if you really want to be cost-effective, downtown San Jose, underground, but no reason to underground all the way from the 101 border, past 101, all the way downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. The next speaker is Stephanie Munoz.
I've been riding that train for a long time, and so I have some observations to make about it. It seems to me that we should have the longer platforms, the grade separations, and the bike capacity on our own budget, whether or not the transfer, the tax passes, because they will be important to improving the service. The part that worries me is not a competition with BART, because to me, they seem to be separate systems for separate areas. What worries me is the competition with the high-speed rail on the segment from San Jose to San Francisco. There are other towns that have similar situations, for instance, Washington DC and Baltimore. There are two different sets of trains that go from Washington DC to Baltimore, and they're competing, and they're competing for funds. And it's stupid, and I don't think that that should happen with us. Whoever gets the money is taking it away from the other one. I don't like that. I think we have a limited amount of money, and it would be better spent on having the 18 people that are going to be on any one train from San, from San Jose to San Francisco go on a Caltrain train. There's, because I went to San Francisco on the train for a long time, and also, even when I was in college, I went to Seattle U, and I know something that has escaped many people's notice. San Francisco is the crown of a peninsula. The train that goes up to San Francisco has to stop there. It can't get on the ferry and go across to Oakland. So, to have the, the high-speed rail go into San Francisco when it could more productively go up to Sacramento seems to me to be a huge waste and that hasn't been really well thought out. And there's a lot of, a lot of dismay amongst us because of the controversy over the funding of the high-speed rail. We really don't know, I think you have to admit, that the public does not know what's going to happen with this high-speed rail. We really need to know. I don't think you know. And I think that that's important. I would say, I'd also like to know where we are on electrification. It was brought to my attention recently in the papers that electrification requires above-ground wires, but Palo Alto has been paying a lot of money to put the wires underground because we don't like above-ground wires, and we don't like cutting down trees. I think we have to make up our mind at one point or another whether electrification is really going to be the panacea that we seem to think it is. And, thank you.
Thank you. Omar Chadi is our final speaker on this.
Hi there. Thank you. My name's Omar Chadi, and I live in San Jose, but I'm speaking in part as a member of the Santa Clara Valley Taxpayers Association, to which I'm a member of the board, and we voted last week to oppose this project because it's undefined, and we could better use our money, our transit monies that we're already generating, and rail money, and road money. So, let me put that aside. Now, I'm speaking as myself, as a private individual, and that is that I'm a strong advocate, as you know, I've been here many times, especially after somebody gets killed on the Caltrain tracks, that it's time to move on, it's time to look to the future, and let's get the BART loop going around the bay, and we start by extending it, as the leadership group is wonderfully doing, extending it. Let's extend it to Palo Alto in the next ballot measure, if there is one, in, in a manner consistent with what your standards are in your general plan, et cetera. And again, the lady before me spoke very, very well about the rail, the overhead, et cetera, and we can save the Palo Alto tree. In addition, because we have a loop around the bay, poor Gail, she's heard this 100 times, you can actually pull people in from the East Bay. You don't, they don't need to be in their cars, okay? Affordable housing is there and south. So, everything the leadership group's trying to do is a good thing. BART, so, we could reduce the accidents, we'll have one rail system that works. All the counties now approve taxing themselves. This county, thanks to the leadership group, is 70 percent voted for rail, and last time, over 2/3 percent. How often do you get that with a tax measure? BART is the right solution. With BART, you get, you can also do the third rail with the freight train, and you can do a bikeway pedestrian path from, and connect the ones that are there, both cross and two, all the way to San Francisco. That's 60 miles. Let's look to the future. Let's not go back to a 1920's cantilever rail power system. Also, the F, as I said before, I don't think you're going to stick with the two-track system. That's just, that's just a sucker's ploy right now. The F R A E I R hasn't been done, and when it is, I think they're going to come out saying you need three tracks. So, you know, I say, let's save dollars, let's do it right once. BART has high frequency, it's longer service, it works better, it has dual capability, so if there's a problem on one BART station, you can go the other way to get home. It's just the thing that we need to do in our region. There are so many purposes for South County. We can run a Santa Cruz, a bus like we do with Santa Cruz, and the Capitol Corridor, as you probably know, is extending south to Salinas. There's plans to do that, so we'll still have a train. But we don't need the Dumbarton Rail to have trains going over it. 1910 solution, dropping pollution, brake particles, and everything else in the wildlife refuge. We can use the money from the Dumbarton Rail, the money, the $2 billion to extend Caltrain, and we're going to have BART, it's already there. We don't need a parallel electric system. Okay, so, I just want to finish with your, with your late Steve Jobs, late Palo Alto resident, who, remember, quoted Henry Ford when he said, "If, if I ask my customers what I want, they're going to ask for a faster horse and buggy." High-speed rail is a faster horse and buggy. It's 110 miles an hour. And so, high-speed, Caltrain is the shill for high-speed rail. You're going to lose your land use control if you push Caltrain.
Thank you. I'm going to return to council members, and we already had some lights on from before, so Councilmember Price.
Welcome. Thank you for coming to our meeting and giving us a presentation, and thank you, Mark Simon, for coming from Caltrain, too. I won't repeat a lot of comments that have been made. I think the issue of this part of the county, North County and Central County, is, for us, Caltrain is where the improvements are critical, and the ridership demonstrates that, the potential growth demonstrates that, et cetera. It's my strong belief that the success of BART will depend on timely and comprehensive upgrades to Caltrain, to improve service, to improve operations, to improve safety and connectivity. And I think many people have spoken to that. It really is a critical part of this, so it's not, I mean, BART extension is important, but for this part of the county, it's Caltrain and the connectivity to BART to really make it successful for everyone. The issue of the ballot language, I know you're in the early stages of that. I would say, I think it is beneficial to look at the last measure, sales tax, transportation issue in San Mateo, in terms of how they identified projects and provided some flexibility in the utilization of funds. I would suggest also, I think Roland Lebron has some important comments about looking at the, the measure or the proposition, I don't know which it was, in San Francisco. I guess my observation is, I think that the, keeping the categories is really critical, so that the six elements you're talking about, they can be discreet. I think the issue is sort of threading the needle between not being so specific and prescriptive that you have no flexibility, and yet providing some flexibility within the categories. A couple of examples. For example, a people mover proposal in the past specified it would be at a certain location in Santa Clara County, and subsequently, there's been discussion about the people mover being more appropriate, you know, a different part of the system. And if you're too prescriptive in your language in the ballot measure, the council at VTA or others will say, "You cannot use the funds for X if it's not at that location." So, I'm sure you're, you're looking at that. The other concern I have, an observation, is that this is a really long period, 30 years, possibly 35, is what I've kind of heard, possibilities. I don't know if that's true. Is that a possibility?
I haven't heard that.
Okay, good, okay. Well, the point is, within 30 years, in terms of transportation projects, design, and technology, I am certainly hoping there are going to be significant improvements and modifications. So, the issue then is, within the language, this is a question and a concern, how are you going to draft language that would allow for, right now, unanticipated technology or changes which may be more efficient, provide better services, and require capital funds, funds, let's say, that come up in 20 years from now? See what I'm saying? So, I, that is a question, and I think that's certainly critical. The other issue is the language regarding the allocation of funds, and what is the specific process that would be used if there needs to be modifications within categories. And I don't know if, in this stage of the process, where you think that kind of language or detail would emerge at this stage, or identifies specifically the parties responsible for designing a process that would allow that kind of flexibility if needed. So, that's a question in terms of your thinking right now. That would be helpful.
Thank you, Gail, for several good questions, and several points made earlier, too, that sounded like they were looking for a response, so I'll mention some. And part of a role for all of us is occasionally to say no, too, and that's never easy. So, I'll start with Dumbarton Rail. Before there were cost estimates, the leadership group was huge fans of exploring Dumbarton Rail. We were even able to get the Hewlett Foundation to help fund a study for us. Those cost estimates, as you know, exploded north, and the ridership projections plummeted south. That's why MTC made a policy decision on Dumbarton Rail that was not favorable to Dumbarton Rail, and that's why Alameda County, in its measure that it's putting on the ballot this November, the only thing that they changed from their 2012 measure, when they're, when they lost by 700 votes countywide, was to strip the money for Dumbarton Rail. Dumbarton Rail is being pulled from people's measures. So, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but that has not come up in any working group either as an affordable project with a hard, with a high ROI. So, I'll just be candid. That hasn't come up with any transportation professionals with whom we've met regionally or locally, and for the reasons I've just mentioned. In terms of electrification funds, no funds for electrification have been diverted. The 2000 measure didn't even start collecting sales tax till 2006. It runs through 2036. There have been no funds diverted. In terms of a Mountain View light rail item receiving some money, when you do transportation work, as your own transportation staff will tell you, and you have funds over a number of years, you often take advantage of opportunities and move things forward and back to meet the needs. That doesn't mean funds are being diverted. So, if nothing else, I hope I waylay those fears, because that's just not the reality of what the VTA has done. I'll let them speak for themselves, but that's just not the case. Omar Chadi, it's so good to see you again. Haven't seen you in years. And Taxpayers Association, very legitimate comment that we're going to oppose this because it's not specific. There is no ballot measure yet. So, there isn't that level of specificity yet, because we haven't even decided yet if we're going forward. If we do collectively decide to go forward, there's going to be a high level of specificity, going to your point, Gail, which is excellent, trying to find that balance in a democracy where voters rightfully want and expect as much specificity as possible, to also have some flexibility built in, to take advantage of new technologies and other, other things that could happen in terms of the ebbs and flows of a very dynamic economy. It's a fine line that we walk, and it's a tough line, often, as well. That's why we try not to do permanent measures either. They lose that accountability in our estimation. It's why the only permanent sales tax for specific improvements that's ever been passed was the one in LA County a number of years ago. No one else has even tried that. Your final question about 30 or 35 years, I haven't heard that from anyone. We've tested around 30 years. That's what we did in 2000, 2008. I will be 84 years old at the time, and I think that's about far enough for me to go out.
Okay, we've got more, more council members.
Thank you. Just one other comment about grade separation. I do think that the points around that are very important in terms of operations and safety. I also do recognize that the estimated costs for grade separation are 100 to 150 million per-
Per separation.
Right, for grade separation, you know, Caltrain.
And the other challenge with grade separation, and by the way, my, there are many aspects of transportation policy I know very well, and some that I am not as studied on, this is one of them. But what I understand is, not even all of them have been scoped. So, some of the ones that we know, we know are in the 100 to 150 million per range, but others haven't even been scoped, which makes it very tough to plan for in a measure, of course. Yes?
Thank you very much.
Okay, we've got four more council members here. Councilmember Berman, then Klein and Scharf.
So, I'll be brief, partially because I had a great chat with Carl last week. Thanks for that, and thanks for coming tonight, and thanks, Mark. Yeah, I'll also be brief because Gail hit upon a lot of the points that I wanted to hit upon, and Carl already asked that, for the most part, answered them in regards to, you know, the, making sure that the language you use in the, in the, you know, ballot, I guess wouldn't be in the ballot measure, but the language you have in the proposal really restricts the ability to move money from one bucket to another. I understand, you know, that you want the flexibility within the buckets, within the different funding areas, but, but, you know, our voters are going to want to see, you know, some, some, they're going to have some security in the fact that if money says it's going to go towards Caltrain, it's going to stay, you know, for Caltrain and not get siphoned off, or any of the different buckets that, six buckets you've identified. You have a quick timeline, if you're, if you're going to put this on the ballot in November 2014, and I understand that you're still in the process of analyzing that. At what points will, as things get more specific, and to your point, you know, they haven't yet, but when, at what points will council and the 15 different city councils, I think there are in, in the county, and the public get a chance to weigh in on, you know, some of those specifics before the proposal's finalized?
Mark, great points and two great questions as well. So, some context. Of the five successful measures we've led in the past for transportation funding in this county, the quickest we ever went forward was six months. The longest we ever took was 16 months. This was identified as a priority at our stakeholders meeting in mid-December, but those working groups didn't start until January. So, start to finish, that would be almost 10 and 1/2 months. So, it kind of falls in that middle ground. All of them felt quick. There are so many moving parts to every aspect of any county-wide campaign of this scale and importance and funding potential. So, while this falls kind of in the mid-range of that, believe me, for me and my small team, it, it feels fast because there's just so much to do. In terms of that process, again, that's why we reached out to all the professionals in the region as well as in the county, to start meeting four months, almost five months ago now, and they've been terrific. That's why we've been so transparent with polling. How often do you see private polling about a potential tax proactively put out? We want to be as transparent and as accountable as possible, and to draw in as much feedback as possible. That's why I asked to come tonight. That's why I've sent four letters to each of you, offering to come and meet with you at your convenience since the first week of February. In terms of city councils taking up action, that's always your prerogative, but that's not part of our request.
Sure. And maybe I didn't, I didn't necessarily mean official action, but, but, you know, what's the, how fully baked will the proposal be, I guess, that first day that it's made public? Is that intended to be the final plan that's, that's going to voters, or will there be a chance? And it's, it's, you know, a dangerous idea, you know, if you open it up to 100 cooks in the kitchen, or however many council members we have in the county, you know, that's, that, I'm sure that's not what your intention is. But, you know, to what extent will we be able to see a little more specifics before things are finalized?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's why it's kind of a constant process of shaping and refining from macro to micro. To move forward, really, by the end of June, we would need, as an organization, as well as collective- as collectively, with as many interested stakeholders as possible, know pretty precisely what we'd be proposing. Why is that? Just to work the calendar back, by the first full week of August, that Friday, which is either the 8th or the 9th, is when the registrar of voters requires everything finalized to place on the ballot. The county board of supervisors meets that week prior, as the Valley Transportation Authority meets that week prior. They both have statutory ability to place a measure on the ballot should we decide to go forward. So everything would have to be finalized prior to that, and I believe the VTA and the county board of supervisors take the month of July off from any public meetings. So again, it brings us to no later than the end of June to collectively have a very specific proposal for great organizations to review and consider.
Thank you for that. And this will be my last question because I know that we're getting late tonight. But so is your plan—I noticed that San Mateo, they recently had a sales tax measure to go towards transportation and they identified six buckets. And the buckets are specific, but I think within each bucket, there's a competitive kind of application process for certain projects throughout the course of the measure. Is that your intention as well or is your intention to be more specific on exactly where the money will go early, you know, right up front?
Yeah, and this is where different cultures and communities do matter. We work a lot in San Mateo County as well as San Francisco County, where we've been helping Mayor Lee on the potential for transportation measures to this November and two in November of 2016. We're tangentially involved with Alameda County and I've offered our support there. Our past successes, almost all of them have been quite specific, as we've found voters in this county like a high level of specificity. It's the engineering culture, we believe, of Silicon Valley and the trust in very specific, "I will give you this, my tax dollars, if you keep your word and deliver this" list of improvements. San Mateo County seems like a slightly different culture of, here's the category and here are a range of choices and we'll do as many as we can afford. That seems to be accepted in the culture of the communities and the policymaking culture. That's different than here, at least with past measures. That doesn't mean we're always—we're not always open to learning and absorbing good ideas, but the funny thing about a two-thirds democracy, you better be pretty accurate to get a two-thirds vote.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
Good evening, Carl. And I think you're deserving of sent up a special award if you're appearing before 15 different city councils over this short period of time.
Whoever would like, but not all 15 have asked yet.
Oh, well, we ought to know those that don't. They're, I think, missing out. I really think it's part of the process.
I hope it is.
Yeah. Well, anyway, having appeared before other city councils during my career, I can appreciate the amount of time and effort that you're spending and I thank you for coming up here.
Thank you.
Let me give you my perceptions and you can respond if you—as you deem appropriate or not at all, because I think questions will depend on what you start producing and writing as to where we're going. My first perception for you to think about, and it's only—and I say perception very, very deliberately because you well know that perceptions are perceptions and they may not accord with the facts, but they tend to override. I think in Palo Alto, the perception is that we have not gotten our share of the money and that sometimes things have been transferred out of what was originally thought to be spent in this area, but not. Related perception, BART's great, but so is a lot of other things that don't come to Palo Alto. So perception, you can cite all the statistics you want about how good BART is, it's not going to necessarily persuade people in Palo Alto because there were people in Palo Alto who ride BART is relatively small. At the top of my list, and this isn't perception, but this is from having spent time on this issue now, is grade separations. Because all the improvements we may get from electrification of Caltrain and things, all the other improvements to Caltrain will disappear if the four or five intersections that we have with BART—BART—with Caltrain get backed up and clogged up and so that people start complaining that they're spending all our time at the grade crossings and can't get home and so on and so forth. So that all that goodwill, all of that will disappear if we don't solve the problem of our grade crossings. And it seems so far that San Mateo County has done a better job because they have set aside money for doing that. And I think it's a problem that we really need to address in this area. The last one I mentioned to you, and I recognize that this is seemingly afar from what you're talking about tonight, is Caltrain governance. And the reason I mention it is that money tends to have a way of talking. And we need, at least the perception is in this community, that we need to have some greater say in how Caltrain is governed. We're the second leading station in the system, as I'm sure you know, and the third one is Mountain View.
That's right.
And there's no assurance at all that a Mountain View Palo Alto person is on the Caltrain board. And we think there should be. And so we need to see some—we'd like to see some reform in that. And frankly, I think that we'd also, this I know is widely shared, some change in Caltrain governance and funding so that we can be assured that for daily operations, there's enough funding and it's not a sort of an optional thing with the three counties. And so I don't know how you fold it in, but I think that state legislation or whatever, but usually when there's a thrust for a large sum of money, it's also the right time to have some other reforms. So I hope that you can, in your spare time, give those things some consideration as well.
Larry, it's always a pleasure. Thanks for your feedback and the perceptions, which, you're right, are so important.
Carl, I'm going to—
The Caltrain governance—
Did you want to—hang on just a second. Did you want to get a direct response from Carl on your comments?
Yeah. Yeah. I invited him to do that.
Okay. No, I know, it's just—it's taking a lot longer to go through this, but I think it is important.
Well, first, thank you for the feedback on grade separations. And again, there are about 10 core areas along the route where grade separations could be a possibility. And obviously, if there is much as $150 million each, that's not doable. So with every decision you make and every decision any of us make, priorities in life have to take precedence. I can't recall if grade separations in Palo Alto have been scoped for cost. I believe in Mountain View, at least at Rindstorf, I think there has been some scoping done. So if you or your staff have those types of figures, please communicate them to me soon. I'd like to learn more and be informed. So please know that. And I hate ever saying this to Larry Klein, but on governance, we've never tried to do governance in our measures. When VTA was being formed, those were policy decisions by policymakers. When the Caltrain Joint Powers Board was being formed, same thing. We don't usually try to swing above our pay grade. We try to be helpful to build coalitions and community around transportation funding measures. Historically, we've never tried to climb those mountains, though your points aren't incredibly valid. I think it's a bit of a head-scratcher why North County isn't—doesn't have a seat on that board, but that's not something we've done in these measures.
Thank you.
I hope you'll still meet with me, though.
Councilmember Scharf.
Thanks again for taking the time and listening to all nine of us. I think there is a lot of angst over the issue of whether or not Caltrain's going to run out of capacity. I think we're very concerned about that. And one of the issues with Caltrain, obviously, is that it takes a long time to make the changes and ridership is exploding. You know, as people have said, some of those trains are uncomfortable to ride because they're way overcrowded. And as you pointed out, getting a bike on Caltrain is not always that easy. So given all of that, I think there's a lot of angst in the community that the politics line up behind BART when you look at this. And I think you've sort of indicated 3.5 billion. I heard you write 1.3 of that goes to BART. So that leaves 2-point-whatever. Did you say 1/7 of that 3.5 billion would go to Caltrain?
So that's 500 million.
It was a personal statement. I would like as much as 1/7. Yes. So 1/7 isn't even that much, given that I think they're equal systems, really, in terms of the benefits they provide. And as Councilmember Burt said, which I thought was a really good point, was that the costs to make Caltrain really work are so much less than that, you know, than what it takes to do BART. And I'm not suggesting you don't do BART. I mean, I think BART's going to be great, we hook up to it, but it's not going to do us much good if you hook up to BART and we can't ride BART because we can't get on the trains to do that. So, you know, the much assurances that we even get the 500 million in the measure, I think is what it's going to take to get our—to get North County to support you on this, really. I think, you know, we've gotten a number of emails and other concerns and I think there's real angst on that. And I'm hoping that you'll find a way to address it and give us assurances that we will get that 1/7.
Greg, thank you for reaching out in the past. We've started our conversations, I believe, back in December at the Cities Association meeting, and I look forward to sitting down with you. I love it that we live in a valley where we think a half a billion dollars isn't very much money, but you're right, the needs so outstrip everything we're doing. You know, candidly, we could probably do a half a cent and it still wouldn't be enough, but we could do a lot more. The only reason we're doing a quarter of a cent increment in terms of what we've been considering, again, initially for November of 2016, is that we know that there are a lot of other needs that our cities and towns have identified. And to use the vernacular, we're just trying not to be piggish.
Well, maybe another eighth cent for Caltrain would be good.
As you know, because Pat, Burt and others joined us, was it four years ago already, Pat? When we were pulling together meetings here in North County about do we need a dedicated revenue stream permanent for Caltrain? That wasn't able to galvanize everyone and then Caltrain was able to work out some efforts with their own budget and a lot of steam seemed to go out of that kettle. But the commitment to Caltrain is strong. I hope what we've done in the past and continue to do at least alleviates any concern that there may have ever been on that. Our members are 392 companies from throughout this region that we call Silicon Valley. Our members want to see something that has a strong ROI, that's accountable, that's transparent and is going to help as many of us in our local communities as well as the region as a whole as possible. We've tried to do that in past measures with a pretty good track record of delivery and that's what we would hope to do with any future measure.
Well, we really do appreciate all the efforts you've made. One of the items we had here was whether or not we wanted to refer this out to Policy and Services, so I'll move that we do.
Do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I'm going to just briefly speak to it. I think it's a really important discussion for us to have as a council. Sorry. I think it's a really important discussion for us to have as a council and I think there's a lot of details that we really, obviously, don't have time to go into tonight. And so I'm looking forward to that and I assume we can contact you for further information and have Richard work with you on that.
Always. And as I told my assistant today, if council members need to meet with me on weekends, let me know. You know, we're all time constrained and if we're going to move forward, we need to accelerate and we'll be available to you.
Well, we do our best work between 11:00 and 3:00 in the morning, so does that work?
It usually does.
Councilmember Burt, do you want to speak to your side?
Just, I'd like to encourage Policy and Services Committee to really dig into the issues around Caltrain capacity. I know that friends of Caltrain have been doing a lot of work on it and maybe there's a way to reach out to them and parlay the groundwork that they've been doing because that's the critical and least talked about issue for us on the horizon.
Okay, we've still got a few people that have not had their first round, so can I hold this motion? We can vote on it at the end. I've got Councilmember Schmidt and Holman and myself, and then we can go ahead and call—I'll call for the vote. So Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, thanks again for a nice, interesting evening of talking politics. I just want to reiterate three things I heard tonight and be explicit about it. Number one, the 600,000 voters in North County or residents in North County. I think we see a good part of our future in the connection to San Francisco, San Francisco to Silicon Valley. It's a connection that is flourishing, growing in many ways, and it's critical to our future. That's why Caltrain is important to us and it means the capacity on Caltrain. But that brings up issue number two. There's a conflict between capacity, more trains, longer platforms and grade crossings. East-west connections are vital to our community, to making it work as Silicon Valley. And increased, enhanced Caltrain in its current format challenges our connectivity. So you've heard virtually everyone mention grade crossings and that should be an explicit goal in anything that has to do with us. And the third key thing I've heard is be explicit. You know, you want to talk politics, there are interests that we have that I think are clearly enunciated and we would expect to see something in June that expresses those interests clearly.
Greg, thank you. And by the way, what I'm steeped in is policy, especially transportation policy, but in a democracy, that is a political process. The reason we have reached out to transportation professionals as thoroughly as we have, as we have with all of our past successful measures, is because our commitment is to sound policy. So I just want to make that clear. That's why the '84 measure delivered everything that it promised. That's why the '96 measure delivered everything that it promised except for one that voters afterwards in the communities in which one of the 19 projects was to go said they didn't want it, but we delivered all the other 18. The other two are just now in their early phases, starting in 2006 and April of 2009, running 30 years from here. So the ones that have run their course have delivered everything. The ones that are works in progress and early in that work in progress are already showing strong delivery. So I just want to make that part clear. And what we hope to fashion together, should we together decide to move forward, is equally sound policy. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I'll be brief. Thank you again for coming very much. Three things. One is I agree with all the many comments that you've heard about assurances as to Caltrain funding. I mean, that really is critical and there's nothing more critical. Comment to the Policy and Services Committee is when it comes to grade separations, might be advisable to talk about some specificity around that, like a description of what is intended by grade separations. And then lastly, a clarification potentially to the motion. Maker isn't here. But I think it should say, refer this to Policy and Services Committee for discussion and recommendation.
Sounds good.
Because otherwise it just—otherwise it just ends there. And recommendation to council.
Yeah, that's fine.
So—
We'll make sure that that happens, Karen.
Okay, when Greg comes back in?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Councilmember Holman, we agree. That's why grade separations, to the full extent that we have fresh data on what a project's scope, cost, and schedule would look like, would really be vital. It's hard to make a promise with something that has no scope, cost, or schedule. So the sooner we can get that type of data, the better informed we can all be.
By data, you mean description?
Yes. Data around what would that timeline look like, what has been the history of work on that. Yeah, so scope, cost, and schedule is the basic term where we would need to see as much information as we could. That's what's actually good as well. Going back to Greg Schmidt's comment about North County, of that multi-year county-wide expressway study. Those eight county expressway projects, there's almost scope, cost, and schedule on everything because they've been studying it so recently and it's so fresh. North County alone, North County cities, again, for the Board of Supervisors District that captures those 600,000, Palo Alto, Mountain View, Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, Sunnyvale. Just on the Lawrence Expressway that is the Sunnyvale Expressway, that's $440 million for North County right there. But it takes it from a Level of Service F to a Level of Service C, and it can, it makes the entire corridor a complete streets network. And for active transportation proponents like myself, that is a huge win, and it's a win for North County.
So I guess, I guess to be explicit on mine, it's like, the word "scope" is what I would focus on, on your comments, because there are grade separations, and there are grade separations. So "scope," I think, is a, is a critical word in your description. Councilmember Scharf, when you were absent, I amended your motion.
Yeah, I told her.
So, and you're okay with that?
I was good with it.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now there's me.
Thank you, Mary.
Well, I think you and I've had, already had our conversation, and thank you very much for inviting us down individually and now coming up. And I want to thank Mark Simon also for sitting through the evening. Mark knows, and maybe you're getting to know how passionate I am about making sure that the train does run on time. And so I personally will be looking to make sure that we have some specific language that does go to the capital improvements that are so necessary for Caltrain in Santa Clara County, to make sure that there's enough rolling stock by electrification in 2019. Those binary tracks, or whatever you call them, in order to make sure that you can take a train offline in order to keep the tracks running. I've had a Clipper card for six years, and so I ride Cal, I used to ride it very frequently. Now I ride it, I try to do it exclusively whenever I'm going anywhere up or down the corridor. And I've gotten used to being able to slip over to BART, and I certainly wish BART was not as noisy as it was because there is hearing problems going on with, I'm sure, many Bay Arians from the screeching sound that BART makes when it's not maintained properly. So there are lots of improvements that can happen. And Caltrain in particular, though, I think that the modernization is going to be welcome for service, but there's going to be capacity problems very quickly as well. And so I would like to see that addressed in a way that shows that carve-out with the language. So I will be looking for that when you start to finalize how this all gets bucketed. Because as much as I'm concerned about that, I can see how concerning it would be if we didn't even have this money. So going out for this money at the right time and striking this at the right time is really exactly what needs to be done. And congratulations for your nimbleness for being able to do this. We've done a lot of things here on council. It is just hard to turn on a dime, and you are turning very quickly. And so we are going to take this up very quickly to make sure that we can follow the language that you're doing and secure some support. Now, with that, I know you know that we are doing a grade separation study, but it's not, I don't know if staff knows when the grade separation study is going to round completion. Do we have any information on that at all, so Carl could get that now?
Yes, I'm hoping that it will be done in the next two months. Right now, I think we could, that's conservative. I think maybe even a month, we're getting some final data from our Public Works Department over to Hatch Mount McDonald.
Yeah, this is just feasibility. So it's not, it's not specifics, it's just what would, what can we do?
It's rough cost, too.
No, no, I know, but it's not a design. It's not, we're not designing anything. We're just taking a look at what is the feasibility of trenching and, if not trenching, then what else? And as you know, east-west commute in Palo Alto is tough, and we're already maxed out at our, at our grade separations and our, and our at-grade crossings are, are, once, you know, once electrification comes in, they'll fail right away. Everybody knows that. So this is a big concern for us to kind of get this whole situation solved for, Caltrain's been here for 150 years. We're building for another 150 years, and we know that sometimes we don't get the freedom to have that kind of strategic plan for that long. I wish that we could look like that for Caltrain and get the funding over there so that we could take a look at this up and down the corridor from San Francisco down to San Jose. I guess the electrification stops at Taman Station?
Taman.
And doesn't, Taman, Taman, I'm great with my pronunciations here. And Gilroy will be diesel trains. So will people, people will, they'll, if you're commuting from Gilroy up, I'm assuming you'll have to transfer over to an electric train. Or no, you'll ride both of them, Simon, together?
Yeah.
Sorry, finally, Mark gets to speak.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons that we favor the overhead wires, because you can operate diesel trains underneath them. So the Gilroy trains will often, some of them will run all the way up. Some of them will have transfers. It all depends on what kind of service there is available in San Jose, what kind of connections. You may want to transfer, even though you don't have to, because you get on San Jose and you can get on a bullet train.
You get on the express.
So it's, a lot of it is still sort of stuff that has to be figured out.
Yeah. But those are the kinds of things that I would like to see Caltrain really have the confidence to be able to go forward and do that type of strategizing, instead of this anemic sort of five-year plan, you know, CBOS, then electrification, then rolling stock, and those kinds of things. So I hope that this can come, bring some of that relief. That's what I'm looking for. So, thank you, and it looks like Policy and Services will be taking this up, so tomorrow, tomorrow night, to get it, to get it kicked off, so that we can try to be nimble and turn on a dime, too.
Great.
So if you have any concluding comments, this would be a time to do that, and then I'm going to call for the vote from my colleagues.
Great. Mayor Shepherd and members of the council and to your staff, thank you for allowing me to join you tonight. When I reached out, I think it was just last Thursday, to ask, you were so gracious, and your staff was wonderful about accommodating that request. But even though we're a private sector organization of CEOs, the whole purpose of Mr. Packard creating this organization 38 years ago was to be a positive and proactive force, and we want to continue to do that with you and for our mutual constituents. And your point reminded me of the word "perspective," because 100% of zero is zero.
I know.
So finding as much common ground as we can to serve 2 million very diverse people in a very large county, if we can pull something together, could still be overwhelmingly very good for all of us. So thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you again for coming this evening.
It's a pleasure.
We have one more item to take up.
Many vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me call for the vote. I get, that's what I was hearing, everybody clicking, and I'm going, why?
Go on.
Okay, we are passing that unanimously, and I guess you can start taking it up tomorrow evening on Policy and Services. Good luck with that. So we have one more item to take up. We're going to go back to item number nine, and this is the utility users tax, which...
We're pushing off the development fees?
Yes, the development fees have been, are going to come back to us.
Perfect.
There's no, it's not time-sensitive. Right. And the item for the utility users modernization for the ballot initiative is returning to us with two questions. One, after the city attorney did reach out to the large users of utilities for their interests, and then also whether or not we wanted to do a change in the tax rate. But you are prepared to let us go ahead and put this on the ballot tonight, and you'll help guide us through that, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd. Councilmembers, good evening. Molly Stump, City Attorney. Yes, we do not have a staff presentation for you tonight. This item is returning from an earlier item when you did consider it and agree in principle about the language modernization that we're proposing. And there were the two items that you asked for follow-up on, in particular, some outreach to the large users, which utilities and ASD took the lead on, and you do see in your staff report some, some information about the response there. And Joe Saccio can fill you in on additional details if you'd like to know more. So we would be looking, then, for council to give direction on whether the large user discount, and again, that is for gas, electric, and water, should be deleted. We could do that at the same time as the language modernization. And then that last item is a question about the rate. Council hadn't directed a change to the rate, but did want some further information about the costing, and ASD has provided that. With that, the council has questions?
I do have public speakers on this, so I'm going to go out to the public first and then come back for, hopefully, a motion to take this up. Our first public speaker is Jeff Howell, and to be followed by Robert Moss, and you'll have three minutes.
I just wanted some clarification about what you think the telecommunications users tax would cover. In the definitions, it talks about a telephone communication service, and most members of the public have sort of an intuitive idea of what they think that means. But in here, you define it to be something extraordinarily broader than that. It's a transmission, conveyance, or routing of voice, data, audio, video, or any other information or signals, and so forth. And so I guess my question is, do you intend that it cover things like watching movies, internet service, stuff like that? And if you intend that, by the time it reaches being a ballot measure, I hope it will be described with enough clarity so that people will know what they're voting for. Thank you.
Thank you. And Robert Moss?
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd and councilmembers. I had a similar concern, that you have to be very clear in description of exactly what it is you're identifying and going to be taxing. Having problems with communications, telecommunications, is nothing new. I remember years ago when people first started using cellphones, and the question is, well, good heavens, it's a utility, how do we tax it? Most of the people who are using cellphones don't even live in Palo Alto. We have no way of knowing who they are and how to connect to them. So you have to be very specific about what it is you're going to be identifying, taxing, and how you're going to do it. Otherwise, there's going to be a tendency for people, voters, to think, well, I don't understand what it is they're trying to do. I don't understand what it is that needs this change. And someone will vote no. If people don't understand a ballot measure, they tend to vote no. Second point, just historical issue. When the utility tax was first proposed, a number of larger businesses in Palo Alto, and they never spoke out publicly, but there were rumbles about being HP and Varian, among others, were concerned, and they threatened to fund a no on the utility tax measure. So they got together with the staff and the, and city manager, and it was agreed to get those four or five largest companies a lower tax rate. And they then stepped back and didn't oppose the utility user tax. And frankly, that's annoyed me ever since, because they're paying a lower rate than everybody else, but they're using more utilities. And so I'm glad to see that there's a proposal to eliminate that step-down for the large users. And even if they object this time, and of course, the management is different now than it was 30 years ago, but even if they object, I think you should make it a measure, a measure of fairness. Everybody should be paying the same thing, at the same rates. So that's definitely a change that needs to be made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And bringing it back to council, Vice Mayor Niss, would you like to kick this off?
Why don't I read the motion that is in front of us, which is the staff recommendation adopting the resolution calling a special election to modernize the telecommunications provision of the utility users tax that UIT ordnance and eliminate the discount tax rate for a small number of commercial customers who use large volumes of water, gas, and electric utilities. And that's attachment A. That's the full motion.
All right. Motion made by Vice Mayor Niss, seconded by Councilmember Scharf. Would you like to speak to your motion, Vice Mayor?
I think that this has been pretty well flushed out, probably not the best word to use with utilities. But as you know, this began in '87. It has been a very useful tool for any number of good projects in the city. And I think that this is one of those that, I hope the press does not write this down, but I think it's relatively benign compared to some of our other taxes. And given that the large-volume users have opted to get out as a result of very good staff work, I think we're ready to put this on the ballot.
Councilmember Scharf, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, just briefly. Yeah, I think that modernizing the UT tax and doing away with the large-user exemption or reduction is a good idea. I do think we need to add in on this, make the decision that we're going to do, a modest reduction. I don't know how you'd feel about that, but I would add that in and suggest that we go from 5 to 4.75, which is what the staff suggests in this, and they give the...
I'm, I'm, I'm holding at 5. I've said it's a nice round number, so to speak.
Well, in that case, I'll see if I can get a second. So now I'll speak to my, to my amendment. The staff pointed out that the only ones that have failed have not had a modest reduction. And since we're going up with, and since we're going with the large-user exemption, we can afford a modest reduction. And I think that we're then passing on those savings to everyone. I think that's a win-win for the community, and it's fair, and we should go ahead and do that. And the only ones that have failed have been ones where you have not passed on a modest reduction in this.
Councilmember Berman, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, I mean, briefly, I think Councilmember Scharf hit on the high notes, but we're, we're going to be receiving an additional $550,000 a year by eliminating the large-user discount.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for, large.
I know, I know. I'm speaking very slowly, as I recall the names of these things. And, and I think that this is an opportunity for us to, to really benefit everybody except for nine users, but, but to benefit the rest of the community a little bit, and still benefit the city a considerable amount. And so, you know, I think it's a good opportunity for us to provide a very minimal amount of relief to our residents while still benefiting the city as a whole. And I think it's a unique opportunity that we should take advantage of.
I'm going to clear the board. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make on the amendment? If not, I'm going to call for the vote.
Mayor Shepherd, may I make just one comment? If, if council does approve this ballot measure, we will change the ballot question. That's in the material before you. And I sent it in anticipation of this possibility to the clerk, so she'll put it on the board just so that you can see what the ballot question will be that the voters are presented with. I'd like you to do that before you take a vote on it, please.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Councilmember Holman, you want to speak on this?
Just a question. I was trying to find it again, the, what the dollar difference is between the 4.75 and 5.
It's 140, 50,000.
The quarter cent reduction is between 140,000, which is mentioned in the report, to about 160,000. The large-user discount elimination is around 500,000. The large-user discount elimination is around $550,000.
So if it's $150,000 difference, and I'm with Councilmember-- or Vice Mayor Niss, I like the round number of 5. And we had a conversation earlier this evening about, you know, the difference that $150,000 or so could make. So I am not in favor of reducing this to 4.75. That's one reason, not the only reason.
Thank you. Thank you. And since we've taken a moment here, I think I'm going to speak on this as well. I think our electrical bills are 25% less than PG&E. And so I think that there is-- I think that this is benign, and I will also not be supporting the amendment. With that, I'm calling for the vote. And that measure carries with Holman, Niss, Shepherd, and Price voting no.
But it's a squeaker.
Okay. So the rate has been reduced, and we're getting language up on our visuals here so we can take a look at the ballot language. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's correct. So the clerk is giving you the language there. I think it says--
So we're back to the main motion. And Councilmember Burt?
Yes, my question is probably principally directed to the city attorney, but I don't know who here may have the expertise on this. It's along the lines of what a couple of speakers have been talking about, but mine's a little more specific. So under page 213, section D, in the new language, it talks about not only audio, video, and things, and any other information or signals to a point. And we are entering into the next era of what's called the Internet of Things, where we are going to have a multitude of sensors, which will be providing information or signals to points, as I would understand the technology and how to describe it. And I don't think that's what we're intending to tax. Is that correct? One city attorney, are you familiar with the sorts of things that will be involved in the Internet of Things, which are, many of them, uninvented and undefined yet?
So I'm a simpleton in these things, especially at this hour, having sent home my staff, who is an expert on the language. But let me tell you the following. It is not lawful under federal law to tax internet service. And so the details of the ordinance says that as well. And it will not be applied in a way that is unlawful.
And just to clarify, these things do not necessarily move on the Internet. They are signals. They're information and signals to a point, as I would literally read it.
The language has been crafted by specialists in tax law who are familiar with the federal regulatory schemes that apply here. It's intended to be broad enough to capture current technologies and also be flexible into the future. In particular, the old-style language had some very archaic features which need to be eliminated. For example, a reference to phone service that is charged based on time and distance. Remember, we used to do it that way, right? It was a long-distance phone call was something you talked quickly, or you didn't make them very often. And now we don't think about these things. So the modernization is intended to do those kinds of basic updates.
So I get that's the intention. I just want to focus, and I'm okay with all of that, and for the very reason that we don't want to have soon-to-be archaic language.
Right.
That's the nature of my concern. And Jim, I don't know if you have any thoughts on this and whether I'm off-base on this or--
Well, I think we have time to be able to sort of huddle and talk about it. I mean, I think obviously there-- we're going to have all kinds of parking and other location technology, smart roads. Many of them will just operate on Bluetooth or wireless, things that won't actually be over the Internet. I think if we--
Is that what you're asking? If we're going to tax cars?
Well, not necessarily.
Well, wait a minute. It's one thing--
I'm not saying cars necessarily.
So we got one thing, question about what's our intention. And I am confident that it's not our intention. And then what we want to make sure is that what we have in the law is consistent with our intention. And the wording actually reflects what we meant it to mean.
Of course. However, the city administrative agency is charged with enforcing this ordinance and collecting the tax and working with the telephone communications, telecommunications companies to apply it in a way that's lawful and consistent with its purposes. So in other words, we have some control over that, even to the point of issuing administrative regulations if that's needed in order to--
Okay, well, that may be-- So Jim, you said we'd have time to have this revisited by a second reading? Is this going to have a second reading?
What are we thinking about coming back?
It doesn't require a second reading. We can return to council if there are specific questions and the council's concerned about the language. Maybe I need to understand more what the concern is.
I was just thinking if we could huddle with Jonathan and anybody else to just get a sense, you know, about sort of what is out there and really, would it be applicable or relevant at all by any interpretation?
So from a process standpoint--
It's just not 11 o'clock at night.
If my concern is looked at and the city manager and the city attorney end up with a high confidence that the concern is not well-founded, I don't need it to return. But procedurally, do we need to allow for its return tonight in case that occurs?
No. I think we have the ability to put it back on the agenda if need be.
That's correct.
Okay, then I'll accept that. Thank you.
Okay, I see no more lights, so can we please vote? And that passes unanimously. That concludes item number nine. And we have one final item, which is council member questions, comments, and announcements. Councilmember Holman?
Yes. Earlier this evening, there was a member of the public, Mr. Ballen, who came and spoke about the College Terror Center and had questions about the grocery proposal there. And I would just ask that the staff bring to council an item that describes that proposal for council to comment on.
We can look at those kind of things. We've gotten one proposal. The staff has sent it back and asked for a request for a lot more information related to it, and have yet to receive that information. So we, you know, we're going to have to deal with the timeliness, I guess, of being able to come back.
So can staff-- Well, you haven't gotten that information yet, but when you do get it, you could bring it to council, correct?
In some form or another. We would typically do that in an expeditious way through an email or other notification. That inquiry is already underway while you were having your meeting this evening.
Okay, I was hoping it would come as an action item for council members to comment.
We're getting some general direction here as to what to do. Let us find out where we are better, and I think we can inform the council about where we are. And that can inform your direction.
Yeah, my concern is I just don't want to get as an information item after the fact.
I would assure you, we would not do that. This would not be an after-the-fact situation.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, just on the same issue, I was struck by the word "equal" that was quoted from the agenda, that the ownership would be equal to that of JJ and M. And so it's a striking word, and would be very interested in the staff responding to
I'd like to report out that last Wednesday, Councilmember Scharf and I did go lobby with Silicon Valley Leadership Group in Sacramento. It was my first time doing that, full day of listening to-- ending up listening to caucuses, but meeting with congressmen-- I mean, not congressmen, legislators, and also becoming informed about the initiatives that the leadership group is advocating for in Sacramento, which sometimes doesn't necessarily correlate with ours. But it is also a good opportunity to have access to others besides just our own representatives to give them information, such as our utilities has asked us to do regarding any water bill that is put on the state ballot, that ratepayers bear the burden of paying it back. That some of those nuances do not get reflected in some of the lobbying that goes on. And yet, at the same time, I found it very interesting to meet with the private sector that also travels with the leadership group. And a couple of them did take me aside to champion some of the work that we're doing. One of them was the Development Department. They're one of our contractors for the software that we're using. And he says that we are just miles ahead of every other community with what we're trying to do in the Development Office. Also, the water source, I just got my bill from the water-- not my bill, but my measurement of how I'm using my water. And I hit the jackpot and was a low-water user in my neighborhood this last month.
Want to brag about it?
I am bragging about it right now. Knowing that we had one community member question the methodology, he says, "Let me have them. I want to talk to them about it." So it was actually fun to see some of the faces that go along with some of the work that's being done in our city and the pride that many of these workers, these contractors have in working with the city of Palo Alto to advance, you know, civic, the deliverables that we do, which is quality of life and our services. Councilmember Price?
Thank you. I attended an affordable housing workshop on Friday morning last. It was-- there were several speakers, joint venture Silicon Valley Housing Trust, nonprofit developers, and a financing specialist. And it was also co-sponsored by SPUR. And it was held at Microsoft. It was very informative and underscores the critical need for affordable housing in the
With no more lights, this meeting is adjourned.